Thank you for coming tonight. Do we have an alien side of the table, non-alien side of the table?
Yes, this is the quarantine side.
Normally, you'd be right over here.
Yes.
All right, well, I'm glad that that was organized ahead of time. So, as we do with all meetings, if you can join me, if you're able, we'll stand and say the pledge of allegiance. Oh, can I call our meeting? Can I get a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
So move.
Deb and Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
So, I just want to thank everyone for coming here. Tonight, we'll be talking about our capital project that our B&amp;G committee has been putting together. It's been a process that started in earnest last spring. I don't want to steal someone else's thunder because I don't know what remarks are ahead, but it's a comprehensive effort to look at our needs. And I want to thank the trustees, administrators, particularly Carol Stein, our Assistant Superintendent of Business, our professional partners, and our community members who've been a part of the process. And I'm glad to see everyone here tonight. It's a significant project with a range of areas that we're dealing with in terms of maintenance and security and modernization and affects all of our campuses. So, we have a responsibility to cover that comprehensively tonight. And I think we look forward to learning about it, asking questions, and providing feedback. And similarly, you'll have that opportunity as well. So, thank you, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Paris.
Yeah, Michael shared a lot of the words that I would have liked to have come in. No, that's perfect. You saved me some breath. But in doing so, this has really been a process. It's been ongoing for an extended period of time. And, you know, as we're coming together today as a community and to be able to share what the plan is beginning to look like and the recommendations that are coming forward to the Board of Education, then you have that opportunity to learn, but also to provide your valuable feedback. It actually started with community and where we had a number of identified needs in the categories that Michael referenced. But, once we started this process in earnest going back last year, we started with a community-based committee and a committee that really came together. And the committee itself identified areas in need across the entire district. And so, the work that you see tonight really has grown from that. A lot of tremendous work and the time commitment has been unbelievable from our Buildings and Grounds Committee to Maria, Deb, and Brian and countless meetings. I couldn't even tell you how many at this point. But it's really come to this opportunity where we'll be able to discuss what we think are needed for our school district, not only to provide for our students today, but to preserve our buildings tomorrow and make sure that we have great learning spaces for our kids for decades to come.
So, I guess, as we've done in the past, I'll take it away. I will apologize for the coughing that may interrupt us from time to time, so we know I'm under the weather. For the board, I think what we're going to do this time is after each of the main sections, we'll stop so the board can ask questions, so we can discuss section by section, waiting to the end, and we'll move along that way. This will look pretty similar to our prior two reports, but, you know, here we've now been able to stitch it all together and provide cost estimates that we didn't have before. I should also acknowledge we have our partners here tonight from H2M, our architects, from Trident, our construction manager, and Altaris, our security consultant, who will correct anything I get wrong, answer the questions I can't answer. And of course, Carol will jump in as well where needed. So, you see, here's the overview, you know, why now? No secret, we have a lot of work that needs to be done. District, a lot of deferred maintenance that needs to be done. Chris touched on some of the planning to date. The scope of work, you know, really is in four main buckets. It's safety and security, infrastructure, energy efficiency, and modernizing the learning spaces. As I mentioned, we'll talk about the estimated cost and the timeline at the end, and then we'll also have time for comments from the community. So, why now? You know, just like all of your houses, we have buildings throughout the district that need maintenance, and we have a lot of deferred maintenance. We have aging facilities that need to be addressed. There's HVAC work that needs to be done, paving work, and then obviously some of the things that we need to address from a security and safety standpoint, as well as bringing our spaces into the 21st century. And lastly, addressing some of our storage needs so we can protect the assets we have and maximize their life and prevent unnecessary expenditures going forward. As many of you know, every year, the budget is relatively tight in terms of our capital allocation for repairs. And really, the only way to address these substantial needs that we have is through a capital bond. And while you're going to be hearing a lot of work that we think is necessary and needs to be done, it's not going to happen overnight. First, we have to obviously have the vote, and once it's approved, we wouldn't see a vote until sometime in 2020. So, while we're excited about this work and we're talking about it tonight, unfortunately, a lot of it won't happen for some time from now. So, why now? As we've said all along, the goal for this project is to be tax neutral, so we have expiring debt, which would then be replaced by the new debt for these projects going forward. As you see up there, we have about 1.2 million in expiring debt in 2022, and this new work would slot into that. You know, why now? Also, as people know, rates are at a relatively low point in history, about three to three and a half percent, and we want to take advantage of the lower rates before change. We also estimate that about 90% of the projects will be eligible for state aid at an approximately 20% reimbursement rate. And, you know, as we've said all along, the rising maintenance costs will put a strain on our budget over time, and we want to try to avoid that financial uncertainty by being able to have a capital project which can address them and which we know what our costs will be on a year-to-year basis.
Could I ask a question here?
Sure.
So, the rate of reimbursement has been shifting over the last few presentations. I was wondering if that's a point, and obviously, that's an advantage of the bond, is that the state is assisted in terms of paying for the projects.
Yes, and I will address that. Sometimes, you know, the rate is a formula. So, it's basically the actual value divided by the rawata, which is your resident weighted average daily attendance. So, this is a number that the state has. And it's actually, numbers are dated from 2015 for 2018, 19. So, there's like a lag. And those numbers change all the time. So, for example, right now, some of our projects are at 29.4, others are at 17.6. It is all over the place right now, and that number's changing. We won't know what our number will be until that year because those numbers are set on an annual basis. And once we do the project and I submit final cost reports, that's when that aid will get, number will be set for those projects. So, it's really a moving target. I'm using a conservative number for the borrowing. You'll see that later. I'm actually going to use as low as 17%. I estimate it will probably be closer to 20 by that point. These numbers change every year. So, you know, it's not a huge impact on what we could borrow, but it is something I need to keep watching on. So, and then there's different buckets of our aid right now. So, our older projects are at 29.4. These newer ones could be lower, but it could also be higher. And it looks at the actual value of our property wealth over the state average, which for right now, we're almost maybe three times state value. So, we're going to get less aid. If you were upstate and you were at that state average, you'd get maybe 80, 90%. But since we're wealthier, we don't get that. And that's basically the formulation, how it's done. They could also change the state average. So, there's a lot of moving parts here.
Just within that, you probably said it, but in terms of, when do we know, there's sort of like a lock-in period?
There's really no lock-in period, and the state could do whatever they want. And they change things with building aid all the time. Right now, those are the formulas, and that's what I'm working with. So, there is no absolute guarantee, which is why I'm always going to be slightly conservative when I come up with the borrowing amounts and I factor into the aid. Because really, it's the amount we borrow less the revenue we get back is the net number. So, but I'm going to use very conservative numbers, as you'll see later.
You know, just to put on that, you know, throughout the process, both in B&amp;G and putting this together, we've tried to be conservative in all of our estimates so that we think these are things that will hold up over time. So, as I've, you know, mentioned, we have limited space in the general fund budget every year. We've been averaging about $178,000 a year in capital projects to deal with things like sidewalk repair, ceiling repair, HVAC, electrical improvements, window well replacement, door replacement, window repair and fence railings. And those are, you know, the low-hanging fruit, some of the, you know, easy projects that we can tackle every year. But year after year, we've had to put off some of the bigger items, which we're going to be talking about tonight. So, what we've done so far, we had an RFP and selected our architects, H2M, construction manager, Trident. The board felt it was important to have a construction manager in place from the beginning to help with the estimating and also as we move forward with the project to help with the bidding process. We've been advised repeatedly that having a construction manager in place early would yield benefits throughout. So, we took that advice and we're happy that we had the support of Trident throughout this process. As Chris mentioned, we had the Capital Project Planning Committee, which had various community members participate and help give their input on it. We were guided by our Building Condition Survey and Facilities Plan. We came up with a preliminary scope of work that was then discussed with the CPSC. Then that moved into sketches and estimates from H2M and Trident. Then, the Buildings and Grounds Committee spent a lot of time reviewing that, working on that, and then providing some updates to the board at public meetings along the way. And, you know, now we're here at the point where the B&amp;G committee is ready to make its recommendations to the full board in terms of the scope of the project and where we see it going forward. So, on the Project Planning Committee, we had various people from throughout the community. We had the B&amp;G committee members, some of our administrators, representatives from IFA, representatives from our clerical workers and custodians, community representatives. We targeted people who had children at each school to be part of the committee, as well as PTSA involvement, and then our various professionals as well, who I've talked about already. The initial list of projects was 52 projects. And while you're not going to see probably 52 separate projects talked about tonight, some of those got combined throughout the process. So, at the end of the day, we were probably able to address almost all, if not all, of those 52 items. Some of them dropped off for various reasons, but certainly a large percentage of them are being addressed here. And through the process, we kept a running total of all of the projects that have been updated throughout time. So, you know, now here's the disclaimer portion of the evening. You're not going to see a lot of fancy sketches and designs at this point in time because you can't do that. Until we have voter approval, we can't move forward with full design work and detailed drawings and so forth. So, everything you're seeing tonight is representative, so treat it as that. It's, you know, we're trying to give a good picture of what the work will entail, but we just can't move forward with full design work at this time. So, there won't be a lot of full things at this point.
We will have some renderings, though, of, and we'll get to that later, of some of the key projects so that we can show that the next presentation. But right now, they're still being developed for you.
I had a question on that last slide, which is, that's, you know, an important part of our understanding. We know that we're, I think, if I understand correctly, we're looking essentially to sign off on the scope of projects, but the detailed piece is to come. And I would love for there to be some development of what that process might look like in terms of, you know, what that timeframe is, how people might be involved, what the transparency would be in terms of that and how the board would be involved in approving that work.
I think we, well, we actually don't do that in this presentation. So, basically, after the vote, that's when the real detail works. And perhaps Veronica, you could talk to that, but that's when you start to get really busy with making the designs, you know, getting in detail with the administrators and all the, you know, stakeholders at that point. Once you got all the designs done, then they go to SED. They have to go through an approval process. It could take up to 40 weeks sometimes to get approval. They go through everything, and they're going to check your building condition survey. They're going to go through everything, going to sign off on that. That's when we get ready to go to bid. So, it is a long process, and I don't know if there's any more you want to speak to.
If you don't mind, because you're, we've talked about this many times at our meetings, and it's a good opportunity.
So, yes, so Carol's absolutely correct. It's, um, once the bomb passes, it takes about six to nine months to do the construction documents, depending on what the, you know, what the file scope of the project is. So, we would anticipate that the construction documents are done early 2020. So, in, and Carol's correct in noting that the process to get through the State Education Department to actually get your building permit could be upwards of 40 weeks. However, what the team has budgeted for is a third-party review process, which is a shorter process through SED, but it does cost a bit more money. And that cuts the process down to about three months or so. So, we would anticipate that in the spring of 2020, you'd start bidding out the simpler projects, like building roof replacements, things of that nature. And some of that work can be completed in the summer of 2020. The larger projects have to be phased over multiple summers because a lot of this work you would only do in the summer when the students are occupying those spaces.
I would like to add what I think you're really asking about because we've had this discussion. The larger projects like the HVAC system, the roof, we're not going to get involved with that because, you know, that's their thing. We're not, that's not the technical stuff. You're worried about the more aesthetic things like the entrances or the storage shed or what the football field with the bleachers and everything. Those items, you know, that's going to be done in conjunction with the board. I mean, we're going to make public, I'm sorry. We are going to make public presentations. The board is going to be involved in that process. It's not like they're going to go off drawer and submit. We won't have.
Oh, no, not at all. Ultimately, there's like three phases through the whole construction document process. It's schematic design, design development, and construction documents. And so, through that whole beginning phase, we're going to be going, you know, working with the committee and the board to make sure that there's approvals all along the way. And then, you know, there's, you know, a process where everyone has input on the design. And then ultimately, once a design is finalized, then we take that and then we produce the construction documents, and those are the documents that get submitted to the education.
And I think the point to add that this is a public-facing process. As Maria referenced, that it's going to be an open forum, so folks are going to be able to see the concepts as decisions are being made.
I think you've shared before, in contrast, for those who were involved or engaged in the prior process, because of the relationship to work that was necessary on East Field, you were required to present a design ahead of the approval. So, people who followed the process at that time would have seen more detail than is typical in this process, if I understand.
Right.
Hundred percent correct. Because of the involvement of DEC with the remediation of East Field, whatever design and concept the board was to move forward with had to meet certain standards that were set forth by DEC. And because of the linkage of different projects, so Mizarros Field and Olley Track and the former Dust Bowl, then our beautiful middle school courtyard and East Field were all linked. So, we had images and real sketches to be able to look at at that point in time because soil was moving from one place to another. And so, all the projects were primarily.
And if everyone would just go to page three and correct that one date, I have a typo there. It's on the bottom of the slide. It should be 2022 and not 2020. Yeah. If everyone would just correct on page three, it should be 2022, and I have 2020 there. My brain was not working when I did that. I'm sorry.
Which one?
Page three, which slide?
It could be either, but it could be both, so.
Yeah, so I think.
I think I probably meant to write 21, 22, and beyond.
I mean, it will depend on which projects get to SED when, how long the approval process is. Some of the easier projects like HVAC work, roof work, which hopefully won't take a long approval process, we may be able to start as early as 2021. But some of the bigger projects were looking more like 2022.
And also, some of the projects would have to happen over the summer months, not while schools are in session, so it also will.
I mean, in the fall, we had a discussion about timeline, and my takeaway, that was my faulty memory, is that it felt like 2021 would be more of the focus. So, is that a shift a bit?
Yes, so the very simple projects, and I apologize, Brian, the mechanical projects are probably the more complicated ones. Just because, and it's not so much the design of them, it's actually the review process at SED that takes a longer review process. So, although a simpler design, longer review process. Depending on the really simple projects like a roof replacement, it's conceivable that you potentially could do those in the summer of 20.
21.
21?
21, 2021.
And then the other ones would go into 22.
So, in terms of the scope of the work, a lot of it came out of our 2015 Building Condition Survey, the five-year capital plan, the community-based work that we've talked about, the B&amp;G committee review, as well as our partnership with our professionals. You know, each building was carefully inspected with health and safety items, which was even the highest priority. I failed to identify him earlier, but Gary Knowles, our Director of Facilities, was obviously integrally involved in this process. He has, I think, encyclopedic knowledge of our buildings and what's going on in them and is an invaluable resource in terms of understanding some of the maintenance issues that need to be addressed. So, now we're going to start talking about some of the individual areas of focus, starting with safety and security. And, you know, here's a list of all of the different projects that are, we propose, including at this point in time. The first is to enclose the high school, middle school campus, to reduce entry points and provide security vestibules at both the middle school as well as a new high school entrance with a vestibule. The goal is to have a single access point for visitors at each building throughout the district, and in particular, at the high school where the current entrance is now, and you can, you don't have as good control of visitors entering and where they go because it's a long way from the main office. So, you know, we've been advised to try to move our entrance closer to where our visitors would actually be winding up at, for their visit, usually the main office first. So, that's part of the whole shift in time, in terms of designing now a new entry for the high school. Also, vestibules at Main Street and Dow's Lane, installation of additional security cameras, enhance our signage, improve the exterior lighting at the campus and Main Street, installing card-access doors, so both for the interior classroom doors as well as the exterior doors. This will provide for the ability to lock down doors automatically. So, in a lockdown situation, you'll be able to flip a switch at the main control to lock down the doors, and then also to install some safety film on particular windows. So, here you see some pictures of all of the various current entry points now on the campus where anyone can just walk onto campus, and the goal is to now restrict access and close in these various access points. So, if you see on the next slide, we have a plan here, which is an overview of the campus with the various dotted boxes, which show those entry points and where we are proposing to enclose those areas. And these are just some initial renderings of what it may look like. You know, our goal is still to try to keep it open to the extent possible, while at the same time maintaining control and keeping people outside and providing the ability for our students, though, to move from building to building. So, again, here, more talking about enclosing the campus, and again, just some ideas of the renderings and the way that we'd have doorways. If you look here, you know, that is the area between the courtyard and going out towards the parking area and drop off. So, that's just another representation at this point. So, you know, here, what I was just mentioning, we're talking about the current high school entrance where there's no security vestibule. Everyone enters through the mar gym art wing to the high school building, at which point you walk down that long corridor all the way to the office. You can, at that point, have access to other points of the building. So, the idea is to eliminate that and create a new entryway that's ADA compliant, and that's what we're looking at here. So, this is the current entry with those long stairs, which are certainly not ADA compliant. So, the idea is to rebuild that area with a ramp and make it accessible, and also to create a security vestibule out front there, which you see at the top with a area for our security officer to reside and provide check-in for visitors before they then proceed to the main office.
And I would point out that the existing atrium would not be changed. This would be outside of the atrium, so the vestibule would be, would be what, right now, where there's a landing and then beyond, because all the grading would be changed. So, we would be able to preserve that beautiful atrium that we do have right now.
Ryan, can I also add, when you were just speaking about enclosing the campus, one of the things that the students really spoke about in the survey and some other groups was that they did not want to feel like they were in a jail, that the school was all closed up for security reasons, but they wanted it to be closed up to a point. So, these walls would be exterior walls only. It wouldn't be on the inside. So, the inside courtyard, the quiet, what do we call it?
The quiet courtyard?
Quiet, the quad, the inside quad. There wouldn't be walls built on the inside, only exterior. So, it'll still remain open and the kids will, you know, it'll be secure.
You had shared a certain scenario before, when in the past, when we've had lockouts where there's activity happening in the area that an open campus versus this presents a difference.
We could think of any number of different scenarios when we've had to implement security protocols in our district. And we could think of things that are frightening and scary, such as when there was a homicide in Terry Town and the perpetrator was at large. Or you could think of a situation as simple as a rabid dog that's out and running around outside school grounds. And in a case like that, we'd go into a lockout mode. So, a lockout mode would be that we would keep all exterior doors closed. We wouldn't have visitors come in, but our students could go about their daily business, move from class to class, go to lunch, they could come to the library, whatever the case may be. But the challenge that we have with that today is that our students are now in different buildings. So, when we had the situation that I referenced from Terry Town, children were literally stuck in buildings. And with the support of the Irvington Police when they are available, they came up and provided escorts to move our students from building to building. But there were times where students were sitting in a particular building and not able to move from class to class for quite a while. This model still keeps us nice and open on the inside. The courtyard is open for student use as it is today, but with these perimeter walls and the security of all the doors now being locked around the school, our kids could move from class to class, period to period, completely safe, and we wouldn't have to worry about that exposure to the outside concern, whether it's the Terry Town scenario or a rabid animal.
Brian, I'm wondering, since this is the first slide where we mention a new space for a security vestibule, if it's worth it to spend a few minutes, especially since we have our consultant here.
Yeah, I was going to get there in a couple slides and invite their input.
Okay, great. And the other comment I was going to make is this would be an example of a rendering that we are going to have, correct? So, the community will see this new design, and we should expect that in the next two weeks or so. Is that fair?
So, as part of this whole project, there's going to be some grading and site work for the new entrance and paving, which will also provide an opportunity to improve our traffic patterns on the campus, increase the space between the buildings and the parking areas, and actually add a few parking spaces to our, to our campus. So, you know, here are, you know, some of the security audits, safety best practices that Altaris helped to identify, including vestibules to screen visitors prior to entry, eliminating the multiple entry points, you know, the ability to remotely lock down our exterior and classroom doors, upgrade locks, some safety and security films, and security cameras. So, at this point, you know, to the extent there are any board questions, or to the extent our representative at Altaris wants to chime in here with some of their recommendations and thinking on this, that would be great.
I have a question?
Yeah.
That last, can you go back that last slide with the render, the picture? Yeah. So, while the grading is going on. So while the grading is going on and the paving that's gonna be happening out there, much needed, obviously, wondering about traffic, while it's happening, you know, what's that gonna look like? What do we, I mean, right now, it's pretty tight, right? That, what you're saying? We talk about it's tight. When that stuff is going on, what's that gonna look like? What, more importantly, what's our plan to mitigate the traffic that will be a problem?
Well, most of the work will be done during the summer, so it will be.
So you wouldn't be, none of it would be done during the summer?
Because in addition to this, though, you cannot really see it from here, or at least I can, I'm not wearing my glasses. There are dotted lines on this, on the map. One of the things is we're pushing, where the buses empty out where the kids are now, we're pushing that out and creating more of a space between where the kids get off and the buildings, because right now it's a pretty tight and.
It's gonna go through the.
So it's gonna, right. And more spots, as Brian said.
Which I don't think you highlighted so well.
I would like to take the opportunity, if you could, just expand upon what purpose the new vestibule design serves at each of the buildings, because that's a major change for our community, both looking at the schools and the kids coming.
Sure, absolutely. So vestibules are actually one of the most common improvement upgrades that we see in schools. The premise behind it is that when visitors come to the school, we want to be able to successfully vet them before they enter the building. So as you have it now, people can walk right into the building and their first point of vetting is by a person that they're face-to-face with at that point. If that person gets distracted, they're able to maybe move throughout the building. If it's someone you don't want in the building at all, they're already in the building. So the vestibule concept is twofold. So the first layer, as we'd say, is on the exterior of the building. So a security person can actually require that person to buzz into the building. They look at them, they can see who they are, ask them what their, their business is within the district. Assuming that they meet that initial vetting process, they're then entered into a vestibule. It's commonly called a man trap, where, in other words, if there's a problem, that person can still get out, but they can't get into the building. Their credentials are taken at that point. Typically, a driver's license is scanned through the raptor system that you have in the district. At that point, as long as there are no problems and their purpose in the district has been verified, they'd issue a visitor pass that they adhere to their outermost garment and then be allowed into the building at that point. If at some point they identify that there's a problem with that person, order protection, non-custodial parent, sex offender, or someone that's just been flagged by the district that they are not to be here for whatever purpose, based on past conduct or a variety of other things, they don't go any further. If the police are contacted, if the person wants to remain there to be interviewed, fine. If not, they may even leave. But again, the vestibules are a very basic first level or first layer of defenses on the exterior of the building. They're not an inexpensive one, as you already know, but they are something that, as far as a best practice, certainly recommended by all of the various agencies out there, Homeland Security, a variety of architectural organizations out there. It's something known as crime prevention through environmental design. So it's a standard as far as that goes. And this addresses exterior type threats. We know unfortunately that some of the threats are lawfully in the building to begin with, but this one focuses on the exterior of the building. In many cases, these vestibules are in fact reinforced with safety and security film to allow for, it's given you additional time as far as for breakage. It's not designed to be bulletproof. The entire building at that point has breakable windows, but the vestibules are designed to slow someone down if they're attempting to break into a building, if that were the case. But again, vestibules are not for the worst of the worst situations. They're designed for everyday best practice, common sense, office environmental.
Great, thank you.
I know this is gonna sound silly. Can you just describe a vestibule? I'm picturing like when I go to Florida and I roll up to grandma's house, you know, the little vestibule with the gate?
Absolutely.
Is that what we're talking about?
So, no.
On a smaller scale?
If you look at this, if you look at this diagram here, up on the top where it says, here's your atrium right here, your vestibule's essentially a set of double doors, two sets of double doors. So when you get to the first set of doors that are out there, you have to buzz. Assuming that they allow you into the vestibule itself, now you're inside the vestibule and your security person has access through a window to actually then get credentials before they're allowed into the building. So two sets of double doors.
Got it.
Many schools are actually set up, and we see a lot of it, because we work a lot of schools, they have vestibules that are in place right now. They just need to be utilized or they need to be modified a little bit. Fortunately, with the setup here, it's a much larger project, but again, it's, you're gonna answer some tough questions in the wake of a critical incident about what you do on a very basic level to secure your campus, your building occupants. This is one of those things that you really wanna have in place.
Dave, for example, our middle school vestibule can be pretty much used. We just need to modify it slightly to put the security person who's now inside in that alcove.
Supposed to hear where there's not.
Right. So the middle school one is actually pretty well set up. It just needs a minor modification. With here, we have nothing.
We don't want to leave a security person in the vestibule because it subjects them to potential danger. So we want them to be protected as well and to do the vetting process from a safe location.
You're not creating a new structure. You're modifying existing structures.
Well, well.
It may need to be built out a little bit.
In this case, it is a new, it's a new structure.
But being built out from the existing.
Yes.
But we have to tackle that area anyway, because it's not ADA compliant, although it was the original design of the school to be the main entrance. It no longer forms. So we have to tackle that as a project.
But also during arrival and dismissal times, there are certain modifications, right? So that the students aren't unduly burdened.
Right. So what happens is typically at arrival and dismissal times, you see a situation where it's a monitored point of entry, because again, you're not gonna have everyone go through a vestibule and credential at that point. So there's, there's people from the school that are there monitoring to make sure the kids that are coming in there from long here, they go through that process, and the same thing for dismissal. And they're also there supervising to make sure that there are no hazardous conditions, both on the interior of the building and perhaps in the parking lot as well.
I wanted to pick up on that question. Could we go back? It's probably two slides. No, it's the one with the list of, maybe it's too far. There we go. So in, as a layperson and thinking about these different solutions, what I've appreciated about most of these is that it addresses multiple circumstances, when you were talking earlier about, you know, a half dozen scenarios. The vestibule, I'm gonna admit, what first flag that for me is, is a question I wanna look into, is anytime I go to any other school district for an activity, it's impossible to get in to the basketball game or the, you know, science fair, because they happen not to have that manned or, you know, no personnel at that place. So it proves to be a very effective impediment for getting into it. So I think there's that piece of it in terms of, I know on our Tuesday budget meeting, we're talking about increasing security to be, to have that increased presence, but it's certainly something that has to be managed. Additionally, you addressed it in terms of, there are many times during the day when we have large groups, large numbers of people going in and out. In terms of when I have looked up about the vestibule concept, I see it becoming common in schools. I don't really see it in New York City when I go around. They seem to have other solutions than a man trap. And what I've read is it's more of a, often for corporate use, a back room solution protecting, you know, computers or other types of, so I think for me to understand and be comfortable with this idea is, one, understand what we're doing with personnel and are we supporting it with, and that's a separate process with our budget. And two, what I've come to understand, and, you know, this is very serious, we're coming up on a year since Hartland. I mean, this is one of the motivations, and there's way too many before that, of why we wanna address these types of issues. It sounds like the most effective thing we can do is delay people. And so I know that that's another part of the solution, is that interior to the building. We're talking about card entry, auto lock. Can you speak to that a little bit and how that works?
Well, when you look at this list of items, the one thing you need to keep in mind is that there is no one thing that's going to suddenly make the district safe. It's a layered approach of many things that address a wide range of hazards, and they all function, some of them help one another, and some of them are standalone measures that are out there. So when we look at the vestibule, that's primarily for an exterior threat. And while we typically focus on the worst of the worst when we talk about safety and security as far as the active shooter scenario, there are so many other hazards, as Dr. Harrison mentioned before, that are much more common than that particular scenario, knock on wood.
Absolutely.
And I can't tell you the number of times that we've seen situations here in the Hudson Valley where people have come off the street and walked into a school and had contacted students, and it was a big problem. So, and those are the types of things that we look at to say, how do we allow people to just kind of migrate in without being vetted or stopped into the buildings? Not even talking about the worst of the worst situation, but just the daily type of things. And that's why the vestibule from an exterior partnering approach is one of the sound concepts that are out there. As you move on the inside of the building, at any given time, as we stand in this space right now during the school day, if we have a threat that we identify, we have to be able to effectively lock this entire building down. That is an extreme challenge when you have a big building, and particularly in a district in a school like this where you have multiple detached buildings, that becomes a huge challenge. So when you look at some of the other improvement opportunities, like wireless lock sets, that with the press of one button, whether it's on a phone or another device, the entire building can be notified, put into lockdown, emergency services can be notified, other buildings can be notified, so that they can enact procedures at their buildings, which might be a lockdown or a lockout. Getting the parents to know what's going on, because we know, in the wake of a critical incident, they're all coming. And fortunately, while I'm a parent with three in schools right now, I get it. The problem is, is that we get in the way of emergency responders who are trying to help and protect our students. So all these things happen so quickly, to the degree possible, automating the process is key. So we talk about the entry lock systems, the safety film, that's really designed. It's not designed to stop projectiles, it's designed to stop someone who's attempting to break glass and either to try to open a door or get through a opening to get into the building. And even them stopping them for five minutes could mean the difference between a police officer standing there and on their way to the building. And that's what we're trying to do at that point, is to create time and distance.
I just had one last question around vestibule. So right now, we come in right here in the gym and art wing entrance. We're saying that we'd have two single points of entry for each school.
Correct.
What's the scenario for everybody who came here tonight to get into a building following this, this work? Would they be now coming in down here and coming through the gym and art wing? And will we reverse the issue for these after-school?
For an after-school activity such as this, that would be the scenario, yes. You would have someone coming through, visitors coming through that single point of entry. And with the plan, as you referenced with budget, we would have security staff that would be available at those particular locations to be able to guide and direct people accordingly.
Is there an ability to manage what doors are locked or unlocked, so that people are limited in which directions they can go through the building?
Oh, sure. One of our recommendations usually is particularly with schools, that if, let's say you're utilizing during the course of the school day, after-school may look very, very different, where you're utilizing just a gymnasium or just a cafeteria. There's no reason for it to bring people from here to walk all the way down to there. So oftentimes, we see, and we'd have to review it once we have the work done or prior to the work being completed, is to decide how do we wanna modify our security protocols and where our people are coming into the building and where any after-school security personnel might be vetting those people, in fact, there's security personnel there. Another best practice is to, without violating fire codes, is the use of fire doors. You can close doors to cordon off sections of the building, so that people don't have to be in the building. Unfortunately, the days of, there were some significant issues with the wall group with the scissor gates in the hallways, which essentially trapped people in some buildings, which you don't see them anymore. But now, as long as you have the necessary two points of egress from any area, sometimes you can lock those doors without violating the code to keep people from getting to other parts of the building, and in an emergency, may be able to drop automatically to stop someone from getting too far into a building and protecting the people on the outside of the door.
Any other questions from the board?
Carol, if you could just go back a couple of slides, and Brian, if you don't mind, a couple of the details that we didn't discuss, when you, you look at the illustration of the parking lot, slide 17.
Oh, I'm sorry, I went back too far. This one?
17.
I can't tell from here.
Yeah, keep going forward. This one. So when we look at this image, and Maria referenced it before, so when we talk about the recontour of the land, there's a couple of points that I think that are really worth making here, is if you actually look at where the roadway is, and I'm gonna get up to highlight it over here if I can, is that currently, the driveway right outside of the building, right here, runs right along this line. This redesign actually pulls the roadway, as you can see, away from the building, which increases our pedestrian safety, maybe students outside or before, after school hours. But it also provides the safety for vehicles that are coming up the hill and they're just further within the building, someone accidentally pops over or, and looking at that. We also have, we know in Irvington, parking is one of our needs, right? So we think we're not grand, but we're also increasing some parking spaces that we have currently here. We're moving parking away from the island to the other side, so you don't have that flying spot where folks could walk right out through the island and between cars into traffic. But what is really notable here is, I think, when we think about traffic flow coming onto the campus and the rate of speed at which folks could drive, no one, currently, this is open. You could just come up around the corner and zip right through in front of the building. But what this actually does is actually a traffic pump approach here, because you're gonna have to come up and around this corner, and you get the elevation shift too. So we're not gonna be looking at the same level pitch that we have. And additionally, our current entrance to this main parking lot, right over here. So what this actually does, it requires folks to drive all the way around, without getting all the traffic entered on this side. So it slows traffic going into the campus, it protects our pedestrians, and also will really be a better deterrent for folks coming through this area, whether they're not expected to be on campus. So there's not, you know, a couple of specific measures. Again, moving the driveway away from the building, moving parking off of the island, adding some parking here, recontoring the land is actually gonna slow traffic, and moving the entrance to the other side also presents a safer environment.
I just wanna follow up on that. Sorry. But, because in terms of what you were just demonstrating, how do students and other pedestrians arrive to the campus under this new scenario? Certainly, we have many students who walk up and down the hill. Down at the bottom, we've been waiting four years for improvements at the crosswalk. Hopefully, that'll happen someday.
Right.
We might get this done before that. But how would pedestrians?
There's a sidewalk. You'll see the sidewalk and it's wrapping around.
So that is a sidewalk. It's not a retaining wall? It's a sidewalk? Sidewalk. Okay, great. No, that's great in terms of what.
Yeah, so it's definitely an enhancement there. So now, if you think the students that are walking up Heritage Hill Drive to the campus are actually turning and walking through an open space right along the roadway. So now, we'll actually be on a proper side.
And anybody comes up in the morning knows that they have the sun right in their eyes.
Well, and that is also the issue that we're also addressing as you, currently, when you drive up, you know, your pitch, when you're coming right up to that parking lot, to drop off, your pitch at a high angle and that sun is hitting you. So that also addresses that, because people are.
I would just ask the board if you have any more questions for John before he has to leave. No? Okay. Thank you.
Do we wanna give, normally I'd wait till the end for a community, but if they have security questions, just give that opportunity.
Good idea.
Good idea.
Are there any questions from the community related to the security component here? And if so, could you go to the back microphone, present yourself by sharing your name clearly? And then we ask that you keep your questions or comments to three minutes or less.
Christine Chan, just a quick question about glass. Like, you know, a lot of ways that, you know, let's talk worst-case scenario, active shooters have entered in buildings by shooting up a window. So what have we done or thought about in terms of addressing entering through windows?
So I mentioned it a little, a little bit earlier, is that one of the key components is that it's unrealistic to install bulletproof glass around an entire school building. Bulletproof glass is extremely expensive, and it's just not practical for an installation in a school. But what typically you'll see now is that safety and security film, which is essentially adhered to, or if it's a new installation, can be embedded in the glass itself, provides the ability that if a projectile would go to, which typically would shatter the glass, and typically you'll see ground floor windows with tempered glass, a safety glass to prevent you. It's very similar to tempered glass as far as what it looks like. When you shatter it, it stays together in one piece. But with tempered glass, you can easily just pull it apart and get through it. With safety film, and you can actually go online, 3M has one of the bigger products out there, and you'll out there, and you'll see a video of a person trying to get through the glass, and it's five minutes of kicking, sledgehammers, axes, they simply can't get through it. And that serves two purposes. Number one is, we don't want people climbing into a building, but even breaking the glass at a classroom window, to be able to break the glass, reach in, and open the lock set. So, that's why we adhere the glass to the safety film.
Is that the plan, to install this type of?
That's one of the improvement opportunities involved, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Is it also, do those tend to have a solar component as well, so there's that piece that we're?
You'll see that in a section. Dual purpose.
And in addition, there's also film. We have some classroom and offices that are at ground level, and the walkway is passed right by it, so you can see into the classrooms. There are also from 3M, they have different types of films, but also, they're reflective, so everyone can see out from inside, but you can't see in from the outside. So, that's another type of film that we are also have budget for, for certain locations.
And we're very careful with the type of film, because again, you can tint, and one of the ways of tinting is the reflection. The problem is, and some schools have learned this the hard way, is that it reverses at nighttime. So, as you approach the school during the day, you can't see inside. If there's after-school activities, like right now, you'd be seeing yourself in the room, and it becomes a fishbowl. So, there are other products out there that apply, have the same purpose, where if you looked at it, it would look like a shade, but really what it is, is it's screen printed with tiny holes in it, and it gives an opaque in one direction. So, it's a very effective product. In some schools, even screen printed with logos or signage on top of it. There's many schools in the Hudson Valley that currently have that. Cottona Lewisboro is one that we worked on with them as well. They had a cafeteria that was very visible when you walked up to their building. They applied the tint on there, and they also had doors where people were, similar to the situation here, where people want to go to this door, because it looks like the main entrance, but again, you would want to direct them to another door, so they use that product to direct people to the other door.
The other thing I'd like to add, because you, we spent a lot of time talking about windows, especially on the ground floors, you had also informed us that there's, you have to be very careful about how you treat the windows or replace them, because one of the purposes is the students need to sometimes get out of the room and break the window. So, you can't make the window, so to speak, you know, unbreakable, because that's not ideal either in the safety world. Is that correct?
Well, typically, you have, you have to have a point of egress from every room, and there's typically fire windows, and this is more of an architectural question as well, but there's always a way to get out of those rooms. What we don't want is a situation where someone can easily break glass, typically at entrances and also with classroom windows. The schools are all required to have observation windows to the classrooms to observe the educational process going on in the room. So, there's, that's why you see at every single door in every single building, that there's a small window. Some have big windows, which didn't have safety and security in mind when they built them, but typically you'll see the small, narrow window, which prevents someone from climbing through, but it still allows them to break glass and reach in to the window, which is what we get concerned about.
Hi, my name is Amy Ziff. That actually was, I had two questions, and that was, one of them was about the auto-lockdown abilities and capacity, which sounds like amazing until you think of some sort of perpetrator, person locked into the scenario and people needing to get out. So, I just was wondering if there was like, is there an override for that kind of system? And how does that work? Because you can also imagine a lot of scenarios where that completely is just like horrible.
So, the lockdown systems are not designed to keep people into the room, it's keeping people from getting into that room. So, if we're in this room now, this is a classroom, we can always get out. So, you can always open your door and leave the room, or go out a window. If the lockdown system locks the door to the corridor, to prevent people from getting into the space, as well as a number of different things, dropping doors, deactivating card readers. So, you know, one thing we didn't mention before is that if you have card readers on your building, you don't want people accidentally coming into the building in the middle of a lockdown. So, the system automatically deactivates those readers for someone accidentally coming into the building with a swipe key to come into that building, and a number of other things, the notifications I mentioned, and also visual displays as well. So, large common spaces, gymnasiums, cafeterias, where it's allowed, or on the exterior of the building, you'll love it, the buildings are locked down at that point.
Thank you.
And Ms. Ziff, I could just add, that there's a real practical angle of this too, so we're thinking of the interior lockdown, but when we lock the exterior or the perimeter doors of any given school campus, we're not dealing with numbers of keys and folks being able to now gain access. So, we'd be able to have particular access points around a building, where you think of a PE class, or a teacher is taking children outside for a learning experience, the teacher can escort their children outside and come back to a closed door with a key fob and enter at a given point. But you would have a few of those around each campus that would permit that type of access in and out for staff and other academic purposes.
Sure.
A door access system also has a monitoring thing, so we would know if a door's open. So, like, if someone's opening a side door, let's say, on our lower level, in the garden level here, we would know that that door's open, it would be showing on a panel, and an alarm might even go off to say, oh, that door needs to be closed. So, if it was open, say, more than a minute or two, that somebody propped it open, we can immediately go and close that. So, there's a lot of other features that, you know, we're not really getting into, but...
Yeah, thank you. My other question was about the barriers around the school that have been put up, and if there, I didn't see in the drawings, but maybe I didn't understand the rendering, to address whether or not those are staying, or are they temporary, or are they being moved around?
I can take that.
Buildings and grounds, we're in the process of replacing those eventually. Part of the design, we hope to get, will be different barriers that are presently on the campus, different shaped, maybe different colors, in different locations, but the ones that you see now at the main campus are temporarily placed there.
Okay.
Hi, Danielle Klein. Michael touched upon it a little bit, talking about Parkland, discussions brought up about, I mean, I hate to say it, but students coming into the building with weapons, or I feel like that's sort of like the elephant in the room a little bit, and how we deal with that, because that's been a problem. I mean, not here, but...
So, one of the things I mentioned earlier, and this is, and you touched upon it to your point, is that we know in a lot of cases, the threat is lawfully in the building to begin with. So, we can't only focus our attention on vestibules, locked doors, and all the things on the perimeter. It's common sense, but we still have to focus on what happens when the threat is lawfully in the building. Part of it's addressed by the technology components that we just talked about, but the other piece, which we're actively doing right now, is a training piece and a mental health piece. The district has been very, very proactive on a number of different measures for violence prevention and identifying threats before they become a big problem. We know that unfortunately, Parkland, Sandy Hook, a number of these cases, in fact, most of the cases, someone knew something, and there were warning signs that were simply missed. And in some cases, law enforcement was even involved. So, we have to do a better job of that, because the best way to manage an emergency is to prevent it from happening in the first place. So, we have to address those things. But once, you know, there's a threat within the building, the staff here routinely gets trained. Each building has an emergency response team, and the general faculty get trained on how to manage a wide range of emergencies in the building, ranging from the worst of the worst to a broken pipe in the hallway. And that's critically important. Unfortunately, you have to have the ability, like a police officer does, you have to have muscle memory to be able to effectively manage an emergency without having to go to a manual, because there's no time. So, we want to develop that muscle memory, keep things top of mind, and that's why the training is so critically important, is the work that we do at schools.
Sure.
And I guess I would just take the opportunity too, I mean, we're talking here about, I guess, infrastructure that can be put in place for security, but we just had a discussion...
Twenty second?
Yes, just a couple of weeks ago, which talks about the human component of making sure that we're supporting students in our community, and that's an ongoing concern for us, that over recent years, we've added supports, and you've identified as an administration a need for additional support. So, you know, we have a budget meeting, many budget meetings coming up, and that's certainly going to be a part of that discussion. So, we're talking here about buildings and facilities, but also talking about people.
Yeah, no, there's different, you know, so there's, we're talking about a hardening component, but then there's the human component, and it speaks to the programming that happens in schools, the education that happens in schools, training that's provided to staff, but also the human resource infrastructure that's be able, they are able to support children, to be able to identify students that have needs. So, when we think about where we've been in our, in our path here in Irvington for a number of years, you know, we've added a K-12 social worker that has been a tremendous resource for students, staff, and families. Just this past year, we introduced the K-5 guidance counselor. And the roundtable discussion that Michael referenced, one of the focal points of our conversation that night was about social emotional learning and those types of needs. So, we think, look forward to a budget presentation on March 5th, which focuses on curricular-type areas, and where most of our human resources that impact student experiences will lie. There'll be conversation about what we can do in some of those areas to continue to bolster the support structures that we have in place for all of our students.
Hi, Dela Lenz. I just, well, one's a visual component that I'm just trying to get a visual on, and the other was, I like the security system, I like that you can scan the license, so parents that come up or walk up, and we forget our ID, it's already in there, I think that's fabulous. The question that I have, and you touched on it, when, and the woman before me had touched on it, when all the kids are coming in, and we kind of just kind of briefly went over that, and I think that that's kind of the highest risk, is, because generally, the shooters are children. So, if all the kids are allowed to come in at the same time, and they don't have to swipe, or they don't have to, there's no kind of any barrier to get inside the school, is there any other options besides just a mass entrance?
Well, typically, again, you may have a student that's in crisis that is sitting in class, and whether you put them through a visitor management system or a metal detector, it doesn't matter, they're still lawfully in the building, and they may be in crisis. And we're trying to avoid that from happening to begin with. But as far as the process of not allowing students to come in at the same time, and you supervise these entrances, and you have to be practical, because again, this is not a prison, and I don't think anybody wants it to look like a prison. The mere process of making sure that students who enter the building belong here, which can be a challenge, because again, you may have students that graduated last year and are familiar to some of the staff here, and they may look like they belong here, but maybe they don't belong here. So, these are all issues that, of course, are, come to the forefront. It's tough to prevent every single thing from happening.
Do other schools use different measures, whether it's turnstiles, whether it's any type of alleyway, or, I just don't know, I'm just trying to get an understanding of what the options are, and if we're going to be spending this much money, if our, you know, I kind of want to think about where our biggest risk is.
Can I just piggyback to that? I mean, every building, I referenced that before, every building I've been to in the city in the last few years has that sort of fast gate process instead of a man trap scenario.
So, the turnstiles are typically seen in city environments, across the Hudson Valley, Long Island, where we primarily work, we do not have any clients, or I know of any districts that have that level of security, primarily because a lot of these things that went brought to the community as a whole, don't like the feel of how that would change the complexion of the district. And it wouldn't necessarily stop the person from inflicting harm. Simply my ability to get into the building is not the obstacle, the obstacle might be that what do I do once I'm in the building, I'm in class, I'm in the cafeteria? And even the mere presence of metal detectors comes up often, is that if we know there's a metal detector, you know, whether you walk through, or it's a portable, you can still very easily secrete a weapon on the exterior of a building, open the exterior door, grab the weapon, bring it into the building after you've gone through the vetting process. So, again, you have to look holistically at what are these things actually doing for you, and find the right balance between saying, we want a higher level of safety and security in our buildings, but we want to treat it as if it's a school.
And Dela, I will say, it's a good question. We spent a lot of time talking about that very thing, what was the right balance to strike here, and that the arrival time and departure time is one where you look at the vestibule and say, how could that possibly help us? But it's really, the vestibule is designed, from what I understand from our experts, is primarily more for the other times of the day. During the entrance and exit, it's really eyes on the kids, and having more security present, and having that security guard who recognizes kids, having constant presence in our buildings that actually can identify, and we go to the mental health piece also as a board, that, you know, identifying kids who are high at risk.
I guess I wouldn't mind, you know, either talking to the board separately, or if you have another buildings or grounds meeting, because it's not just when you get to school and when you leave, because especially with the master schedule, we're going to have a lot of mass entrances, exits, with kids getting food, leaving campus, coming back, also, and it's going to be a mix with stat, younger kids and adults, because it'll be teachers and students. If the teachers have lunches at the same time as the students, will the security guard be able to kind of distinguish? You know, it's one thing when all the kids are entering at the same time, you can say, wait, you kind of look older. But when it's mixed, I'm just, if we're going to put all this effort and all this money into it, I might want to be part of further discussion, yeah.
I'd love to piggybacking on Ms. Lenz's questions. Do we, have we identified an additional, I know we have a question and answer on Saturday related to the bond, we'll talk about this more on Tuesday, but in terms of this, the master schedule discussion, are there any identified dates, or is that something that's going to be forthcoming?
It's going to be forthcoming, yes, there's going to be opportunities for that. When we speak specifically to this, Dela, I think there's a piece with the design and the approval of a bond, that we would look at the infrastructure that would support this. And in doing so, we have to think on our campus, we have a security guard that sits in the entryway to the middle school, we have one that sits directly out here greeting our guests, but we also have two roving guards that are here on the campus that have routines and different approaches that they take to monitoring the school grounds. So, we would utilize staff like that to help in the monitoring during these busy times, so to speak. And then, there would be other systems that we would have to build, and we would do so with the support and the recommendations of Alteris, to be able to create systems for proper monitoring, and to do our best to be able to vet all the folks that are coming and going from our school.
And it's worth mentioning that the layout of a city school is much different than suburban school, because of just the mere nature of the number of exterior doors, the ability to get into exterior doors, people letting other students indoors that they shouldn't be doing, propping doors, so it's a much greater issue. We have a number of schools in Manhattan, and really, the only issue is the front door, because they're high-rise buildings. So, it's a different, it's a different security issue.
So, if I could piggyback a little bit, having a pretty fair deal of experience in this particular matter, managing school buildings in the city with multiple points of egress and entrance, one thing I think is really important, that actually trumps a lot of these other concerns, is the human presence of the principal in the morning, greeting students, keeping their eye, looking through at lunchtimes, passing points, assistant principals, and like you referenced, many people, certainly more effective than wanding kids or putting in metal detectors, because those are really the only answers in terms of, even then, it's not 100% preventative, because of the reasons that you mentioned. So, I think the human presence is really one of the strongest factors in preventing those, you know, unfamiliar folks, or even familiar folks walking in and looking a certain way because of social emotional concerns. So, I'd like to think that something we'd like to look from, for administrators, is a part of supporting this program, is being out there in the morning and being a face of the school itself.
I just think that we're putting a lot of responsibility on these security guards that, they try their best, and I'm sure they're very well-intentioned, but they're only one person. So, like I said, I would just like a little bit more consideration about that, and just about the cities. Generally, the shootings are in more suburban, more in our areas, so they're not happening in the city. So, I, do we, I'm not saying metal detectors, and I think that just from working, there's much more pleasant security, you know, it's not like you're going to go through prison gates, I, you know, when I go to work, I'm not feeling like I'm entering into a prison when I swipe or enter in, but maybe that if we're putting this much of an investment in, maybe we can kind of look a little bit harder.
I just, I know that there was someone else looking to ask a question, did you still want to ask that question?
Yeah, just one more thing. The visual, I'm trying to, could you go back to the parking lot and where the school is? Yeah, there. So, I'm just trying to get an understanding, so when parents, when everybody drops off, they go around by the back, back to the seat, right? That's where they're, they're, I know.
Yep.
So, when parents have to park for an IEP meeting, or to pick up their kids, or wherever, where is that? It just seems like there's not a lot of room now, so if we're pushing the sidewalk forward, will there be enough room for the parking and the drop?
There's going to be a retaining wall built out on the other side.
Where the stairs are?
What?
Where the stairs are to the parking lot now. So, that will be a retaining wall. Okay, so you're going to utilize that space. Much better, totally get it down, because I couldn't... And... And I like the idea of having the cars on the other side, because it is hard to see when kids or teachers just kind of pop through. And, that's, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're signed off on the security part of this presentation. Are there, will we have any other opportunities related to Alteris?
I can always contact them and we can get answers.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, John.
So before we move on to infrastructure, I just did want to touch on one thing that, as we'll get to later in the cost estimates, the vestibules themselves actually are not a major cost component. So while it is a design change, the actual cost associated with them is relatively small, especially in the overall scope. So I just did want to make that point before we moved on to infrastructure, which is probably everyone's favorite topic. So there's numerous infrastructure initiatives that are proposed here for inclusion in the capital project. There's site work and paving throughout the district, so that would include all of the schools. Roof replacement at Dow's Lane, floor abeyments at both Main Street and Dow's Lane, the delayed renovation of the girls' bathroom at the high school, replacing a waistline at Main Street School, walkway repair at the Main Street School, and electrical service upgrade at Main Street as well. And then we have some additional ones. We have a vehicle and equipment storage at Dow's Lane, which would then necessitate the relocation of the current basketball court to be closer to the playground. There's going to be a storage building at the campus by the Mazara's Field to store our athletic equipment, which will also provide for concessions and bathrooms. We're going to replace the bleachers. Right now, the bleachers aren't code compliant, they don't have backs to them, and we're going to relocate the press box to be incorporated into the bleachers and get rid of the current tower that is woefully probably falling apart at this point. And then there'll be a walkway from the street area to get to the new bleachers, site work associated with that, and then also a standalone outdoor bathroom at Dow's Lane. Anyone who's ever had a kid play sports either after school or on the weekend at Dow's Lane has probably been faced with a problem of a child having to go to the bathroom. Well, hopefully this will alleviate that.
Are we going to circle back to that piece?
Yeah.
There's a lot of detail.
Yeah, we have a bunch more slides which go in detail. That's the overview. So here are just some pictures of some of the paving work that needs to be done. You know, this is, you know, general maintenance, just like you have to resurface your driveway. We need to take care of our areas as well. This is the roof at Dow's Lane of the library, which needs to be repaired. Just some pictures of that. There's some moisture issues. We go to the next slide. Pictures of the girls' bathroom, that's going to be renovated. Bless you. So here, I was talking about the bleachers, you know, those are the old ones that are outdated. The goal is to get rid of those. That's the ones at the bottom. And then on the far side, to redo the bleachers, to have them situated into the hillside with a home and visitor side. You know, that's just a stock photo, it's not necessarily going to look exactly like that, you know, with a small press box in the middle and some bleachers that are set into the hill. So you can see, you know, there on the site plan, you have that thin bar kind of, you know, where the 50-yard line is with a press box and two sides of bleachers for visitors and home, and then the yellow box in the corner there, which would be where the new storage building would be along with concessions and a bathroom. Currently, we just don't have the space to store our mats, our hurdles, and all of the other things that accompany our athletic program. It leads to those materials having a less of a lifespan than they ordinarily should, so we want to address that. So here's a just simple plan of the building. You can see there, the majority of it will be storage for our equipment, mats, hurdles, et cetera, within a concessions area and a couple bathrooms. And, you know, this also, you know, the thing that ties back to our security concerns, this will alleviate the need for people to access the building during events, also by bringing the concessions and the bathrooms now into the field side. It will hopefully allow for kids not to have to run across the street to get over to where the bathrooms are, so there's a lot of advantages of this location. So, you know, right now, this is our current storage for our grounds and maintenance equipment, which is not the best, so we want to look to have a better storage for that. So again, you know, right now, we have our plows being stored up against windows at Dow's Lane, our trucks that park outside on the driveway going towards the back of Dow's Lane. So, you know, these are all outside, being exposed to the elements daily, so our trucks are rusting prematurely because they live outside, and we're replacing our vehicles at a faster rate than we should because they're not able to be stored inside and be protected. So here are all the different things that need to be stored. So you've got some pickup trucks, a dump truck, salt spreader, mowers, utility vehicles, a vacuum trailer for leaves, snowplow attachments, and some of the equipment, which includes fuel storage cabinets for small equipment. Yes, this isn't vehicle storage, but, you know, your small gas-powered type things, chainsaws, your weed whackers, snow blowers, trimmers, chainsaws, et cetera. So, you know, here is the proposed location for the facilities building, which is at the current basketball court of Dow's Lane. It would be smaller than the footprint of the court. I know there is a lot of trees on the north side, including that big copper beech tree. The goal is to preserve the trees and have the work such that it doesn't interfere with the trees, then also employ landscaping and shrubbery to shield the building. It will also allow us to remove the existing PTSA shed and get that away from the back of the building and incorporate all the storage into one area. The drainage, any drainage issues will be addressed. And one of the advantages of this location is that where the trailers were previously already have utility hookups there, so we can extend those hookups to this building, which would result in a cost savings. And I know there's been talk in the community about the location. As a B and G committee, we looked at a lot of potential locations. We looked at all of our different facilities. We examined the high school, we examined Main Street School, we looked at other school district property. We spoke with the village about trying to partner on a facility, and frankly, they don't have the space. We've approached other landowners in the district to see if we could partner with them, and at the end of the day, we were unsuccessful in those efforts. And the location at Dow's Lane was determined to be both the most, both the best location and the most cost-effective location for the building. So again, now, you see the same slide with now, where the relocated basketball court will be. I think it's, some people know who have children at Dow's who have gone through Dow's, the basketball court is used at different times, for recess, for the Halloween carnival, and for other activities. And this, though, will allow the basketball court to be closer to the recess area, allow it to be used more, allow it to be supervised during recess. And then also, you can see, there's a word bathroom there, which is at least a proposed location for the standalone bathroom at Dow's Lane. So here are just some pictures in terms of those locations. That's the current basketball court. That would be the area for the new bathroom and basketball court, and that's a somewhat hard-to-see picture of the storage shed that would be removed.
I think at this point, Brian, we might want to ask Veronica to come talk to some of the placement issues at the basketball court area for the building. Some of the, or Eric, yeah, sorry.
Eric, can you get the microphone, please? So, a couple of things because of the design's iterative process. I think we're actually looking now, we're working with Google Earth images to, we're probably going to rotate that building 90 degrees. So sit this way and this drive to migrate it up closer to the basketball, where the basketball courts are going to go. That will enable us to have the apron on the north side of the building, which is going to be a little more friendly to the neighbor to the south. We can dress up the back of the building, but you won't have to look at the plows, and it'll be quieter and calmer visually for that person.
Well, you know, there's a, remember, there's a large tree here. Yeah. I don't think it's a tree here, but you're asking.
Well, it's not going to be affected by this. The entire, our work is going to...
All right, I'm sorry. We're not going to proceed with the presentation. You will have an opportunity to ask questions. Thank you.
The copper beech is to the north of the current court. Drip lines outside, from what I can tell, the edge of the paving. We're not going to be disturbing that tree because we're not going to be doing any work nor about the edge of the basketball court. So I believe that we are not endangering that tree by our current plan. Again, everything we're doing, with the obvious exception of the access drive, is going to be sitting on the footprint of the existing court. So impervious areas will be minimally increased by what we're doing. We're also going to maintain, although we have to modify, understanding kind of cut through across the site pedestrians living towards this way and up north to the train station. So we're going to move that, I think we want to look at maybe moving that walkway south in this drive and move up this way, and then look at moving the pedestrian way toward the back, or possibly, I think it's on this side, and tying into the existing pathway.
Again, you know, please, there'll be opportunity for public comment, but, you know, we do have a lengthy presentation and we do need to let the presentation proceed.
We're aware of the issue to re-tie the pedestrian pathway back in, and we're going to look at where the best place to do that is. Also, moving the drive to the north allows us to maybe not touch any of the trees that are also in the south. So I think the overall picture is we're going to, we're trying to be as sensitive as possible to what's there now and work as much as possible with placing things on existing The requirements for site plan approval, even if you don't actually have to obtain it, are that we have no light trespass over borders of the property and all stormwater is handled on-site. That's a requirement that'll be done in this project as well.
Thank you.
I think, you know, as you'll see, so the driveway will connect to the, you know, the current Dow's Lane area, and, you know, currently, the trucks move through those areas daily in connection with their work, so it really would be the same traffic plan for those vehicles that they currently have. And, you know, typically, our vehicles are not coming in and out throughout the day. Typically, they go out, they make their morning rounds, accomplish their work, and come back, you know, absent snow situations or limited situations. So it's not a situation where there's constant traffic in and out throughout the day.
So do we have trustee questions at this point?
I just, I mean, I'm looking at the way the three pickup trucks would get in and out of there, and I'm wondering about, I guess it could just be mitigated by managing the time they go in and out, right?
Well, the trucks are going in and out now.
I just said, I was thinking about when the trucks, the three pickup trucks that would be residing in this facility. I'm trying to envision them going in and out of there and wondering, and then I imagine any issues with that would be sort of taken care of by the time in which those vehicles go in and out of there.
That they currently already do so.
They currently already do so. Where are they now?
They're on the driveway going back behind Dow's Lane.
In other words, there wouldn't be an impediment to any children or adults walking to or from school at any time.
We have trucks now, they're picking up garbage, they're going out, they're coming back behind schools where dumpsters are. Sometimes they stay parked back there, sometimes they get parked in a parking lot, sometimes they get parked on the edge of a field. It really depends on what it is we're doing that day. So this would actually create a place for them to be parked safely and not actually right behind a school in that situation. So, you know, again, we have truck traffic now, you know, in a lot of places. You saw the picture where the plow was stored, that would not be against the building, that would be inside that building, that would make that whole area better. I mean, there's a lot of other situations where we would be improving what we're doing as opposed to creating more issues.
Just a one point to add, that with the plan as proposed, as Brian referenced, that the current old modular building behind Dow's Lane would come down. So, yeah, so there's a photo to come, but to think of where there's creating open space there, so when we think of our students looking out of the classroom, they're not looking at an old shed.
There's that PTSA shed that on the far right there, that would...
But there's a classroom, several classrooms. Right now, they would have more natural light and view when that's removed, and also, it's a leaky shed. And the trucks have to pass around. You'll see them if you're there, driving across the field to get the equipment presently. So I have some questions, if no one else wants to jump in. So you mentioned the trucks and the, how much do those trucks cost new to purchase?
Roughly, depending on the truck, $40,000 to $45,000.
So it's a quarter million dollar investment plus or minus. And what's the lifespan, do you know typically, for a vehicle like that, and what's our experience in terms of their lifespan?
Well, I mean, when we retire a truck right now, our trucks have like 30,000 miles on them. So it's not always so much the life, we could probably be getting 15 years out of a truck with that limited mileage, but we are retiring a car, a truck at that, we're retiring a truck at like 30,000 miles, right Gary? And, you know, a truck should go a lot more, but because of the rust and the work that's having to been done on that truck over the years, they're not reliable at some point. So it's just very rusting out. I mean, we are trying to patch them up as best we can, obviously doing the best we can.
Because we have no way to service these trucks. We have no way to service these trucks. They're rusting out within two years, three years. We'll replace the brake lines, we'll put some gas lines, exhaust manifolds, and brake lines and the gas lines are something, that's a safety issue. We have studio staff and our ground staff driving these vehicles at any time, I'll unverse. I just got the Chevy out of the shop, there's similar problems. I have Dodge, which has a salt spreader on it, that's, I'm getting that to do with that. That was one of the pictures you saw on the slide, and if you looked inside, you'd be able to see all the lines are rusted. There's tools in those lines, those lines are rusted. It could be a death cap, whoever's out on the road.
Can you talk to us about, you know, when we have this overnight snow or weather conditions we've had recently, but particularly in a snow situation, what's your process? How do your staff deal with that?
We usually keep a few people on. If it's going to snow overnight, we have a few people on call because we have to keep Heritage Hill open, and we also have to keep Dow's Lane open. If, at one point, we had a storm where the guys worked overnight, we had a whole crew in here.
And how do they, where do they go to attach their equipment to the trucks?
Right outside, wherever the plows are. During that storm, we had, we lost a fitting on one of our plows. It's snowing, it's two degrees, and these guys are working outside on these machines. We just need somewhere to maintain our equipment, somewhere to work on our equipment, because we can't work like that. We can't be laying on the ground and it's two degrees.
Thank you. No, I think that's very helpful. I was wondering, though, obviously you considered other locations. Could you talk about the pros and cons of, you know, it seems to be a very compelling case that we need something, somewhere. What's the process for deciding where that location is?
Yeah, so, and, you know, architects can speak to this too, but we looked at each of the district buildings, we looked at the campus to see if there was sufficient space on the campus for the size that we need, and we couldn't even come close to anything on the campus. So after that, we looked at the Main Street area, we looked at the property off of Ferris Street, the cost to build there would be significantly more. That also has the impact of going into a historical area, so there were challenges with that. And then, you know, we spoke with other... And then I said, you know, we spoke with, uh, other, uh, large landowners in town, in particular the village, to see if they had the ability to provide space where we can maybe partner with them on a joint facility. And while they've been trying for years to come up with a space for their own vehicles, they've been unsuccessful in doing so. So then, uh, we settled on the space at Dow's Lane, which both had the necessary size, would be the most, and would also be the most cost-effective place to build it, both from a standpoint of the, uh, limited amount of site work that's needed there, as well as the existing utility hookups that could be utilized for the building.
What's the, what's the, I mean, I know we'll get to this later, but what's the, the breakout cost for the, the structure?
I won't do it from memory, so.
Yep.
It's about one point five million.
And then just, Carol, you were explaining before, we have cafeteria on that northwest corner, so what kinds of, uh, and also because I hear whenever we have our meetings in your office, Chris, uh, the trash pickup, so that's, that's happening every day, trucks are coming and delivering food, trucks are coming to take away trash, uh, so there's a lot of traffic. Thank you. So I was just explaining on the northwest side of the building is the cafeteria and also the trash dumpsters, so at present, there are many trucks every day, or most days, bringing deliveries and taking away trash. Are you able to quantify that anyway, or talk about that?
I mean, it's hard to quantify, but trucks are do, are coming in every day, and we, we really do look to minimize disruption, you know, for any student classrooms and, and, you know, we wanna be good neighbors, but in reality, we have things we have to do, so.
Right. Um, I, I know that, can we go to the, the picture of the, the campus, uh, facility, uh, the concession and storage and bathroom? Uh, is there the one that shows it within, relative to the field? Yeah. So that, that, uh, that location would not be a location where you could do a similar project in terms of facilities building?
Oh, there's a hill there.
Just, uh, the way you're doing, there, oh, you have some of that, that's true, the whole area.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'm trying to do a good job, ask any questions, I appreciate it. Go ahead.
There is a significant hill there that we would be, you know, working with.
Was that, was that looked at?
So, we did look at it, because, um, if you go back, part of it, you're talking about the pros and cons of all these areas, so this, using this map right now, part of this building is going to be in the hill, the backside of it, so the side away from the field. So, you're talking about building on the other side of the concession stand.
Essentially, as the gentleman said, doubling, I mean, it's not doubling, I guess it's more than doubling, because this is fifteen hundred square foot and the garage is thirty five hundred?
Right, 'cause right now, the way this one is being built, it's being built into the hill. So, um, from the community up, up from there, even the, even the bleachers and everything else, if you look, if you go back to the slide with the current bleachers, yeah, you see the picture on the left-hand side, see how the bleachers, these bleachers are, are not decoded and, and, um, in desperate need of repair, but you see how the bleachers are built into, into the hill?
Recced.
So, tha, and in essence, that's what is gonna happen here, so it's gonna, you're not gonna see it as much. So to build a whole nother structure on top of, um, we did look into that going higher from there.
Yeah, and actually, I mean, I'd love to get a, the professional input, you're doing a great job though.
No, I'm not.
But, uh, I mean, I guess what I'd be interested is, as people consider, hey, could we put it here, or could we put it there? Because I hope everybody understands it's something that's important for taxpayers and for our employees. Um, what, what are the cost drivers in terms of one location versus another?
Sure. So, so I.
As well as safety, I guess.
Yeah, at the, at the campus, at the, at the, um, the location that Maria was talking about, um, I think what Maria was trying to describe is that, if that building was larger, it would be pushed into the hill, and now we could picture the entire back of that building is really built as a retaining wall, and the cost of that is much more cross prohibitive than building the building that we'd be building, essentially, you know, designing for, uh, the Dow's Lane campus. It would also take up a large portion of that hill, and it's my understanding that that hill is a desirable area for people, family to sit on, you know, during sports events, so.
And how about building on existing, uh, parking areas, is that at all a possibility?
It's certainly something that we can look at, however, with the, the limited amount of parking that you have on the, on, specifically on a campus now.
Actually, you know, Brian, why don't I jump in on that also? We talked about the idea of trying to put like a parking deck where the current lot is and put a storage building there. I think that was one of the ideas I kept talking about at repeat B and G buildings until people said enough already, because the cost of it was going to be, uh, in the multiple millions of dollars, and it just wasn't something that was going to be feasible to do. So we did look at trying to do something like that, and it, uh, between the potential loss of parking spots, as well as the cost of building some multi-tiered structure, uh, became non-feasible within the scope of the project.
We also looked at trying to put it behind the, um, high school, which would be over in that corner, if you know what I'm talking about, where the loading zone is.
Southwest corner.
Right, where the loading is for the cafeteria and the, and the supplies come in, it's just too small an area. And it's a very narrowed, uh, entryway up, so anybody coming in and out.
Couldn't really access the space, it probably turned around.
Yeah, they couldn't access it. So it's, and it would, would have been a bit of a safety hazard there. So we, we did look at a lot of different places. I mean, we could take the gravel lot that we have and obliterate it and put the building there, you'd still have a view from, I would say, the, the residents over on the field point side, but the point is that it would take away from parking, and so we really would, we have a parking problem as it is. So if someone asked about where visitors park, I mean, that's, that's one of the spots visitors park, and that's where our students are parking. They want even more parking. So, you know, we're adding some parking hopefully for visitors in this, uh, this model, but to take away parking is, is a real challenge for us.
And then we also originally really looked hard at the, um, plot of land by, um, Ferris Street, off of Ferris Street. And the original concept was the roof of the building was going to be the basketball court. So we would get the basketball courts out of the parking lot, which from a safety feature, and create.
At Main Street School.
What?
At Main Street School.
Right, at Main Street School, I'm sorry if I didn't say that. Um, get the kids away from the parking lot, get them playing all in the playground area, and then the kids can access the new basketball court off of the, uh, grassy area and walk right onto it. It was, it's a historical area, so the drawings and the expense to build something there was almost double this price to build something like that over there. Um, so, you know, we were just, there's not one location that's perfect, there's pros and cons to everything, um, and this is how we, this had the least amount of cons. You know, we did, we looked at a lot of areas, and even really tried hard with the village as well. Um, but they've also been not successful, um, with Columbia and some other areas trying to find land for their garage, because it would have been a nice shared venture.
Did you, in, in that vein, just to, just to, was the consideration?
You gotta bring the mic up.
Sorry, um, in consideration of this, just wondering about, so I understand, thank you, by the way, for bringing the visual up, because I was having a difficult time understanding, but I see, you know, you'd have to make this level to make something effective, but if you keep going up north, down, back to East Field, was that explored? Talked about it all?
Well, that's what we were talking about, but it would really, I mean, you need to create, um, I, I, you could really talk about this, because when we talked about putting it there, you have to create a big enough space for the trucks to pull in and out, and it's gotta be high enough. Like, the trucks have to be pu, pulling in, so you can't have it on the back ends of, of, of the building where it's gonna be down into the ground, it's gotta be in the front. So, yeah, you're the expert.
Actually, you're doing a good job at describing it, yeah, so just.
In layman's terms, I'm layman's terms, you're, you're technical.
You know, plus also, as Veronica mentioned, constructing that type of facility is significantly more expensive.
You have that road around.
One time, so to adding the road, if you're building a building into a hill, you need to basically make, build the.
I'm talking about on the flat ground on, uh, East Field, like, if you go out in the back to East Field, you go up the road, there's the chain link, and you go back down.
Where the track and the field events are.
Then you go down, behind the, the, we walk the dogs.
You're talking about hiding these fields?
Giving up your dog walking space?
I know, I'm not, I'm just wondering if that was thought about, or, you know, because there's a road that goes up there and goes back down and around, maybe it's not feasible, I'm just wondering if it's.
No, Dave, I was, if I can speak to it, so, um, directly next to the, the gym theater building, there is a pay faculty lot, and then just above that is a gravel lot, which is utilized for, there is staff parking, consumes about fifty percent of it, and we have then our student parking in that area, and then as you indicate, there is an access road that goes up to a flat air space, I believe, right?
He's talking about the plot of land between East Field and towards, um, Riley's house, back there where it's cleared out. He's talking all the way back there. That's also, part of that is village property.
That's not our property.
That's not our land. Yeah.
The property line is actually just beyond the tree line.
Just beyond the tree line.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and what I was referencing, there is just above the gravel lot, it's an area for our track and field events. So it's a, it's an integral part of the, the track and field program.
Can we show where, uh, can we go back to the, the, the Dow's Lane view of, with the drive, et cetera? Yeah, so I know on a prior presentation, it showed a, a path going to the street. Is that still a possibility?
Toward Oak and Willow?
Yeah.
No, we're not gonna be doing that, that, that's not our plan. Our plan is to connect to this current circle.
So the original plan that you had seen was kind of one of the first drawings and originally, you know, it, on paper, you could access it that way or off of the street there, but, um, then the architects went and walked it and grading and everything, and this is where we, they kinda came up with the access should be here and not off the road.
And, and would vehicles, uh, I don't believe they do now, would they ever, uh, use that access?
Well, that access is police, a police, um, there's a gate, it's an emergency exit. So occasionally, we have used it when we need to. Uh, there was a situation where we had a, a bus got stuck on Dow's Lane, and nobody could get around, so we had to open that access. So there are times when we do do that, um, but obviously, that's a neighborhood where people are living, we don't really wanna be, be, uh, messing that area up, so.
So there, there's no intention?
No. No, there's no intention of building the driveway to.
Or even using that at all, is that?
No, it's not.
No.
That was in one of the first drawings as a consideration, but no.
Again, it's an evolving thing, I mean, drawings are an evolving process, and sometimes architects don't, um.
Can we throw you under the bus for a second in terms of, you're not familiar with the community necessarily, so we get to, you, you as a committee get to inform and provide some feedback sometimes.
So early drawings get updated, and if you've seen an earlier drawing, this is now more of a, a recent drawing, that's what, this is an evolu, you know, a process that gets evolved as time goes on.
So, I understand that many of you are here to ask questions about this specific aspect, but we have a responsibility to get through this presentation, so I, I want us to proceed, and we will allow questions at that time.
I want to add, I have a question.
Yes, unfortunately, that, that time, at that time, the gentleman had to leave, in this case, we are, uh, needing to, to complete this presentation, so we're gonna proceed.
Michael Wong.
All right, so we, we are seeing some shifting consensus here.
Yeah, so, well, unless the board has other questions, let's move on to our energy efficiency.
Well, the question is, do we wanna give an opportunity at this time to ask questions?
I defer.
I think so, I think so.
Fine.
Some nodding heads, okay, change of plan. So, uh, I would ask that if you have questions, particularly, uh, hopefully, uh, if you hear a question that's already been asked, try and keep note of that, because I sense there'll be a number of questions, uh, and could we?
Also, yeah, I know Ms. Lance, I see you up at the microphone, but I know you've had the opportunity to ask a bunch of questions, so if we could get people who haven't had a chance to ask questions, uh, first, I think that would be preferable.
So again, uh, we'd ask that you share your name and that you keep your question or comment to three minutes or less, thank you.
Um, my name is Larry Sheps, and I wanna thank you guys for doing such a thorough job presenting the, these topics. And I'd like to start off by saying that I live at Three Dow's Lane, which is, um, a house behind the northwest corner, the cafeteria, it's been there a hundred and sixty years, school's been there a hundred years. Before I came here, I walked off the distance, but can we go back? Okay, so the proposed garage is, if you go back to the picture, the diagram, the schema.
The one that you were on?
Right, if you, if you see the dotted line that shows a half acre property there, that's my house, okay? So if you walk, can someone tell me the distance from that point diagonally across, behind you, Mrs. Stein? Do you know how far that is? Could someone tell me that that's about?
I think, I think you can just tell us.
Okay, fifty feet. From my property line to the thirty-five hundred square foot garage is forty-seven feet, and I live there, and it's a residential neighborhood. To me, I pay property taxes there, I'm a single-use house. So my issue is, why do we need to put that there so close to my house? It's gonna impact my property values, so I might as well give up the last thirty years I've been working to get this piece of property, okay? So you said, well, it's a residence, and so are the people in, in Spiral Park over there, everyone here is in a residence, I'm next to the school, and I, I'm a good neighbor. I've landscaped the school, I've raised my kids, they've gone through the school, they've done great, and I'm a happy guy in Irvington, I wanna stay here. Now, I have to deal with this intrusion into my life, and I'm very, very upset, okay? Number one, if you go back, three, we need a structure, why can't we outsource snow removal? That would save a lot of money. Overtime, can we do that, can we talk about that? The trucks are gonna rust when you have salt spreaders on them, that's a fact of life. We could take a Quonset hut with an aluminum frame and, like a greenhouse structure that you see sand in and salt in, and use that to store the equipment when we need to, during a snowstorm, or we could take it to, I don't know, you could put it in the east, by the East Field and store your trucks. Now, why do you need three trucks to go into Dow's Lane? Are these all for Dow's Lane, or are they for the high school too? Question.
I would say they're, they're district-wide vehicles, Larry, um, so we have three pickup trucks and, and the one dump body truck that Gary, um, referenced before, um, and they're utilized all day long, so I don't want to paint a picture that they're just used for snow removal.
Right.
Our buildings and grounds crew use them for, uh, work across the district, our maintenance, uh, guys use them as well for, for hauling equipment back and forth, so the vehicles are regularly in use throughout the day.
Right, I, understood. I was just mentioning the snow removal to say, hey, look, this is a way we can take a cost, outsource that service to take the burden off the, our staff, and it doesn't necessarily snow a lot. I know you need to salt, but if that could be outsourced, that's an option that has been discussed, because that would save the equipment and the time for that service. Now, three trucks, so why can't the trucks be stored? Well, for the last sixty years, I think the school's been built, trucks have been outdoors, and they last a long time. The truck, I first moved in here in ninety-nine, and the truck that was on the school, on the Dow's Lane campus, lasted, I don't know, fifteen years. I know they don't drive more than thirty thousand miles, because they really don't go that far, and the salt spreaders create, putting salt on the back of the trucks is gonna create the issue of corrosion, not just being outside. My car's outside, and it, it lasts a long time. But the issue for me is, this is big news, and I heard about it today, I didn't hear about it a couple of months ago. I wa, I went outside to walk my bookkeeper to her car, and somebody in the neighborhood came up to me and said, have you heard about this? Now, that little half acre there that's dotted is sort of just there to the people that are putting this project together, the design together, but for me, it's where I've raised my family for tw, for twenty years here, and now I'm gonna wake up and have to deal with a thirty-five hundred square foot, uh, building. Now, that budget that I looked at, that you presented me, is, I think the Dow's Lane portion of that is about six thousand, uh, six billion dollars. The budget for the capital infrastructure for Dow's Lane is twenty, two point seven million dollars, okay? So, building that structure there represents, what, sixty percent of the infrastructure and thirty percent of the budget for Dow's Lane to park a car. Now, if you pay one point seven million dollars to build it, and you finance it over how many years, at four percent, you're spending a hundred thousand dollars a year in interest payment to service the debt on that loan, okay? So let's see, a hundred thousand dollars a year. So let's see, $100,000 a year can buy you a new truck every year. Okay, so my issue is, you showed some pictures. If you go back, I could take you through it to the pictures of the cars. Right now, one pickup truck is parked on the Dow's Lane campus, right? So why do we have to have three trucks come down into my, into our neighborhood to rest overnight? And, you know, you made it sound like there's a lot of stuff going on. It's pretty quiet on the campus. I've been there for 20 years. The trucks come and go and everyone gets along and the trucks have been there for 60 years. So all of a sudden, we need this big infrastructure. So how do you service? We're spending $1.7 million to build a structure and the interest on that. So we're spending $100,000 a year to service the debt. It seems like a lot of money to keep a couple of trucks overnight and a couple of pieces of equipment. I mean, I think we need to, I mean, I would love to get involved in exploring options where we can put some sort of facility to store the trucks. I mean, this is the first time I've heard about it. No one's come to me and say, "Hey, Larry, we're thinking of putting this 3,500 square foot building next 47 feet from your house. What's that going to do to the value of my house?" What's that?
No, no, I just wanted to respond. Go ahead. I think that any neighbor should be very clear about any intention they have in terms of a change to a property. I don't know if you or anyone else would like to speak to that, Dr. Harrison, but certainly it sounds like he's only just learned about it.
Yeah, and to Larry's point, and he and I spoke earlier today, that there certainly could have been the opportunity for some dialogue preceding this, and we acknowledge that certainly.
You know, 20, I've been working for about 30 years and this is my biggest investment. I have, and you see, everybody knows me around the neighborhood. I'm landscaping the property. I have a history of improving the grounds, of working, I'm a good neighbor.
Yeah, I mean, I also know other histories, so I think let's...
Mike, please.
I'm just saying.
Rick Houston.
So I'd like to have other people have an opportunity to speak.
I'm just going to summarize it by saying that I'm really upset and I'd like to see other options on the table where we can place this structure instead of saying, "Okay, we're going to spend $1.7 million and this is where we're putting it." Thank you for understanding my...
Thank you, Mr. Sheps. I think I would ask that the, that the district and the committee make sure that we coordinate with Mr. Sheps in terms of any updates as we move along.
Hi, my name's Alan Richardson. I'm the Chair of the Irvington Tree Preservation Commission, and I'm here for the tree tonight. And I'm very happy to hear everybody wants to save the tree. I did see earlier plans that had drives coming in from the end of Willow that has us very concerned about the tree. But while there's a lot of information out there about how to protect a tree during construction, a lot of it is wrong. And especially with the tree, this is a heritage tree. We don't have that many left in Irvington. This tree was planted when that was an estate. That tree is 150 years old, 150 years old. Major artists have taken photographs of that tree. I'm going to have them for you on Saturday. Charles Scheeler, who lived in the estate house at the end of Dow's Lane, photographed that tree and sold it in the Stieglitz Gallery in New York City. These are very important assets for the village. Right now, the Tree Preservation Commission is putting together a list of trees within the village that have special protection. This is one of them, okay? Now, the root zone of that tree goes well beyond the drip line. A tree of that size spreads its roots for many, many, many dozens of feet. So the drip line is a very old-fashioned way of looking at what's below ground. We now know the root zone below a tree does not mimic the shape of the tree. The root zone of an old tree spreads out a long distance. The roots of that tree are under that basketball court. So when you start talking about ripping up the basketball court, you're talking about probably killing that tree. It may not take a year, it may not take two years, but it will die. And Dow's Lane has lost all of its estate trees. I don't know if there are any left on your property, but all of the other ones have been killed by construction, major trenching, digging new driveways. And I think it's worth protecting this tree. So I'm here to offer you the services of the Tree Preservation Commission to work with you to find a safe zone around that tree to keep it alive. So I think it's worth doing.
Thank you. I just, as a quick note too, in terms of keeping apprised, I'm sure many of you are, but we have a weekly district newsletter that goes out that anybody in the community is welcome to follow and we have updates. The board has a monthly email that goes out that has links to presentations, meeting videos, actions that we've taken. Certainly, the enterprise has covered that this was taking place. So we encourage you, if you don't follow any of those, to consider doing it so that you can keep apprised of when we have meetings, when we have new presentations, that sort of thing.
Hi, my name is Michelle Friend. I want to thank you first for all the work that you've done on this plan. Obviously, a lot of time and effort and thought has gone into it. But this is the part that I am also concerned about. And I think if you walk through this property, if you see how it is being used after school, on the weekends, during the summer, in addition to the uses that Dow's Lane uses it for, like the Halloween Carnival, Bulldog Day, all of those things, you'll see that it's a really cherished and often-used play space. And I think it's really, its elimination is contrary to some of the objectives that you have identified, which are maintaining critical assets of the community. I think this is a critical asset of the school community and also it interferes with the safety and security of our children. I would just say, I think that we all talk a lot about how we value in this community outdoor play. Yesterday, we celebrated National Play Day. Today, we turned our phones gray so that, you know, to protest the amount of time that we spend on devices. But I think it's sending entirely the wrong message to eliminate an existing play space that is used all the time. In our neighborhood, this is, and in the Village of Irvington, this is one of the few paved spaces that is free from vehicle traffic. So there are kids riding, my son learned to ride his bike there less than a year ago. I know others have. There are kids riding bikes, playing on scooters, playing basketball there all the time. And it, and under, and also you don't see, there are, I think somebody referenced the trees that are on the west side. And so that is a shaded play area so that it's, it really is used year-round. And it's part of what makes it valuable. In addition to, obviously, that other beautiful tree that we were just talking about, those trees are valuable and for them to just now be shading a garage feels outrageous. The second thing is in terms of safety and security. So many of us walk our children to school this way every day. Many members of the Village of Irvington do that. So that's like, you know, that creates a real safety issue. And I know that you're saying that there is, there are limited times that trucks are going through there, but it's still certainly a concern. And we're also concerned about the environmental impact of having equipment and vehicles there during construction. It will, and we don't, you know, I understand that there would be another basketball court constructed and that, you know, people are talking about that as, you know, a resolution, but it's not. It's taking away additional green space. So it's still reducing the overall footprint of the school for children to play. So I really do, I mean, there are so many wonderful improvements in this plan and I really do value the plan and want to get behind it wholeheartedly. But I really hope that you will reconsider this particular part of it.
Thank you. Just a related question to that. So did you clarify, anyone about, I mean, I think, does this court as it stands currently for Dow's Lane, is it a daily use court by students? And also in terms of supervision, did you speak to that?
Yeah, I certainly glad to. Yeah, so it is a regularly-used space as indicated on this particular slide. It's used during recess periods when grounds are muddy, when grounds are snow-covered at times. We actually go out and we remove the snow from that space and our students are able to play there. And then there's many special events that happen on that. When we talk about some of those notable experiences, you know, Bulldog Day and the Halloween Carnival, that's kind of the home of the court. So when we think about the court space itself with a relocation to the spot where the old district offices, the old modulators were, we would be able to maintain that opportunity to host these events there and for kids to play there. But realistically, I think it increases the opportunity for our students to use the court during recess time because from a supervision standpoint, we look at the playground and the field that we'd be able to better supervise children. They'd be able to move from the playground, from a kickball game over to the basketball court, and there would be an opportunity to actually better supervise our students than we would today. So from a student management perspective, a safety lens, there would be advantages to the relocation of the court.
It sounds like it would allow for increased use compared to the current court.
Without question.
I have a question. I'm sorry, just, is that where the Quonset cherries are lined up? The Quonset cherries? We have an LA of Quonset cherries that are on both sides of that road. Yes, it's kind of a tree.
They're a little bit further over, so you wouldn't be destroying those.
Then one other, one other question that somebody else, or not a question, but yeah, it is a question. At one time, we were the fastest-growing district in the state and we had a growth issue. That's why the middle school and the gyms were built. And in between that time, a number of modulators were built, including the one that still exists. We destroyed a number of them a few years ago, but there was the district office and there are other ones as well? I'm sorry, could you just go to the...
On Dow's Lane, there were a total of 10 classrooms.
So in our recent history, we had 10 temporary modular buildings on the Dow's Lane?
I believe at Main Street, we had two.
So in fact, in recent history, those have been demolished and removed?
Correct. The only one standing is the one with the PTSA storage and our grounds equipment storage.
Thank you.
I have a quick question just to clarify for myself. Right now, where do the trucks go?
Right now, they're parked.
I'm sorry, we've got to keep you up at the mic.
They're there now. So in other words...
One of them is...
I'm just trying to, so in other words, we're not adding the movement of trucks back in. The trucks are already moving back there.
One truck is parked.
One truck is parked there. We have trucks parked out in the back here and one at Main Street.
Okay, so they're spread across the...
I'm sorry, I'm just going to keep order. Thank you.
We're looking for a maintenance garage. We're looking for places to work on our equipment. We're looking for places to store some of our equipment, our outdoor equipment. As I said, our guys are working out in the cold weather. And it's just, we need a space. We just need it. I'm not saying it has to be that space, but we do need a space.
And could I ask, there was the suggestion of outsourcing. Has that been looked at at any point? Is that something that...
Oh, I can tell you, I started here in 95 and we were just outsourcing the salting of the property. And the bills were pretty high and we decided to get our first truck with the salters. And you recall, '95, '96 was a pretty bad winter. I'm not saying we have them like that now, but at the time, it was more cost-effective for us to purchase.
Very good.
And we currently purchase it through the village. So we get a season's...
Salt.
The salt is purchased through the village.
But just to get a clear picture, so that right now, there's one truck at Dow's, one truck up here, and the other one is where?
There's two at the campus here.
Two are up at the high school.
So what I hear you, two are here, one's down at Dow's.
Right.
What I hear you saying is that not necessarily, this is not a garage where they're going to be parked. In other words, I'm trying, like, it sounds to me like there's an equal distribution right now where the trucks are kept. The issue that we're having is, you've made very clear, is maintaining variety of equipment, not just exclusively the trucks, is being done outside in the freezing cold weather or in the really, really hot weather where it's...
Or rain or...
Or the rain or whatever it might be. What we're not saying is that this is a garage for these three trucks at all times, parking there and moving in and out of there all day long. This is a place where when an engine is broken or a brake line needs to be fixed, like you were referencing before, that they would go down to this location and be serviced and then potentially be parked back up here by the middle school. Or they're going to be parked in there like...
At night, we would park them inside.
They would be parked there.
Inside the garage at night.
The other thing is, even if you did snow removal and you had an outside service, you know, our trucks are carrying equipment between schools. We're carrying tables, chairs. When we have an event at one school, we don't have enough chairs to, you know, totally put chairs at that. We don't store that many chairs. We move them from school to school. There's a lot of other things we do with the trucks, not just snow removal, so...
You have the contractor at Dow's that all the furniture, the chairs, we had to get from Main Street. So those vehicles are used and stuff like that.
Right, I'm just trying to get a sense of, so the day begins, the cold winter's day where you're making that phone call at 5:00 in the morning, right?
We would prefer our trucks to be in the garage.
So they're all going to be taking off from that carport in the morning to go do their business and then return back to that carport at night?
At night.
We do not have a garage present.
Understood. I just wanted to be clear on the path.
Thank you for your patience.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Ryan Tunstall. I'm at Eight Maple Street. And I, like other peoples in this crowd, use this basketball court with my three young children regularly. I have two children in Dow's Lane and one that'll be going in a few years. I, like most people who have already spoken adamantly against this proposal, but that's not what I wanted to ask. My question specifically is related to process. My first question is, I assume that the budget for this facility is located in the overall capital project budget, correct? And so should that, the overall project budget, capital project be approved? Is that a de facto approval for this specific building?
So if we have a vote, we prove this, this is one of the items in the scope of what we'd be doing? Can that ever, could that, obviously, we've not done projects subsequently before.
Sure, I mean, you vote on a dollar amount and you're going to vote on a scope of work. It's not going to be specifically saying, it's going to vote for a dollar amount. Actually, you don't even give specific dollar amounts in the vote. You say 17, 18 million dollars, whatever the number ends up coming at the end of the presentation that the board chooses to do. If you decide later on, you want to move some money from a different spot to a different spot, the board certainly can do that. And there is going to be things that happen and things may end up costing more or some things may end up costing less. So there's definitely movement in that. The board could anytime say, "We don't really want to do that, we want to do this." So, but you can't introduce something that's completely different that the voters haven't approved. So you couldn't say, "I'm now going to go build a new elementary school." The voters didn't approve that. So within the scope of our renovations, they can make changes, but they can't do something entirely that was not listed at all in the scope that you're voting because you're going to be voting on improvements to classrooms, improvements to the security, the entrances. It'll be general in language, but it won't, you couldn't just say, "Okay, I want to go build a new school" or a new something else.
And the other thing I can add is...
So clarify, was that a yes?
So, so yes, you would have money allowed to do this, but the board could choose to not do it.
And what I'd like to add too is that what we've done for the last six months is also to work with our construction manager to estimate these costs. So the reason why we're going through the presentation is to, we have amounts that we associate with each one of these projects. And so if we were to move this building after the vote, it's entirely possible the cost would go up significantly.
Understood. My second question is...
Actually, I just want to add a personal anecdote. I mean, I was involved as a number of other community members here were in the prior bond. And that meant talking to a great number of community members. I'm really proud of the work that this administration did in preparing and implementing the projects that were in the prior bond. But obviously, when you get it wrong, it causes a lot of animus in the community. And when I was talking to people about that prior bond, they were remembering all the way back to 2003 and that, which, the project which built the middle school and the gym and theater. And there were a lot of issues with that and people remember. So I think that's a lesson that you understand very well. I think that's why, as you were just sharing, Deb, you know, we have a number of professionals that are really looking at this to make sure that we get it right.
And I want to clarify one other point. When you're voting and the board is adopting resolutions, there's another process that's happening simultaneously called the secret process. And in that process, we've identified locations for different things. So the board couldn't then change the location for a building. So they could squish the building, but they can't change the location for the building at that point. So, because then that wouldn't, they would not have done the secret process for it.
So if we, just again to clarify, if we go ahead with this work and then decide... So if we, just again, to clarify, if we go ahead with this work and then decide, so we can't say we wanna put this structure in another location?
No.
We could say we don't wanna do this loc, this project anymore.
Correct.
Or the scale could shrink.
After the vote.
Scale could shrink.
Right, right, right. That's what I'm, that's what I'm...
Right.
Or the scale could shrink, right.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, and I think you have a second.
First one, yes.
Second question...
I, I, you have a remaining time allowed.
Again, hopefully, this is an easier answer. Would the design of this structure be subject to the Village Planning, Zoning, and Architectural Review Board?
No, and that's an easy one, 'cause I'm on the ARB. No.
Okay. Why not?
Because the school district is not subject to review by the Village Board.
All, all school projects have to go to New York State, and they have to go through their own...
State Education Department.
Right, State Education. They have their own department. No school district adheres to individual municipality rules.
But that process, as we heard, takes a significant amount of time, that review process by the State Education Department.
We are also planning on producing renderings for what this building would, could, could look like and where, how it would look situated on the land. That is, that is forthcoming. We're still waiting on that. So that's a little bit of a lengthier process.
And sorry, one last question. Do we have any idea how tall this structure is? Is it a single story, or is it a single story with storage above?
Veronica, I think you said it was about seventeen feet. Yeah, you can...
So you would anticipate ten to twelve foot tall doors on the structure, and with that, you would anticipate the, like, the ridge or the slope of the top would be about seventeen feet?
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks again, everybody. My name is Dave Seller. I have a third grader at Dow's Lane and then a kindergartner coming, starting next year. So with that being said, I feel like it's not only part of our responsibility as a community to look at the children that go to school now or the children that will be attending there soon. The, we mentioned something about the communication. You know, we all live busy lives and stuff, so when you see a blurb that goes out that says, oh, capital bond project, blah, 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 if you changed it and said, hey, they're gonna build this thirty-five hundred square foot, you know, thing in your, in your backyard or on, on the property, that sort of changes the way everyone approaches it. So it was posted on a Facebook page, the one oh five three three Facebook page was how I'd say a majority of the community found out about this project or this aspect of the project. And there was a comment that was made by a former Irvington student in the class of nineteen sixty-six, that he said he was in town recently for a memorial for a classmate that died. And at the memorial, they spent a majority of the time talking about their time spent at the basketball court and how the kid lived in Half Moon. And he would climb up and go there even in the, after a snowstorm, and he'd clear it off and shoot hoops. So I think the gentleman Larry that lives nearby, he has a history with that court. My children have fond memories. They play there literally every day. And the key thing to me, there are two, I have sort of a two-pronged question here. One is, it's sort of a technical question. Did we do, or in the scope of this project, was there an environmental impact study done on, on having an industrial thing put in such a close contact of the community and a school with industrial materials, gases, you know, et cetera, yet? Or is that something that would have to be...
Do we have somebody who...
Eric, would you...
Yep.
There's, our planner has prepared a draft, Meg Deck. This is an unlisted action. A short form EAF unless the agency, which is the school district, requires a long-form EAF, which is not required by secret. So there would really not be a need for an environmental impact statement for an unlisted action typically.
Okay, thank you. So, Deb, no. Okay. Okay. And then, actually, this other gentleman had, had the same question where is there, is there a way, I mean, is this set in stone? How, like, we have another Q and A from this point forward, and then, then there's a vote in whatever it is, May twenty-first, right? Or is, I mean, is this something that you are gonna take the, the information and the reaction from the community and then reapply it to a new plan? I know this is like, is this a work in, in progress, hopefully?
It is a work in progress. This is the first presentation that the B and G committee is making to the board.
Complete.
Complete. So we've had, we've had numerous parts of it presented, like updates and things like, this is the first one. So there'll be questions from the board, there'll be questions from the community. Will this be the final product? I don't know. It, it's up in the air. I mean, there could be board members who might, you know, say, I don't like any of this security. And, you know, it's really, you coming to these meetings, questions from the board, all of this will form what ultimately gets put up to vote. Does that answer your question?
That is very helpful, yes. And, but just the last, the last thing that I would say is that with, with regards to the groundskeeping and landscaping and maintaining the, the vehicles and stuff, I really think that part of this program kind of reminds me of something that would be pitched in like nineteen ninety-one. Considering of all the sort of environmental impacts that a lot of those things have, wouldn't we maybe start to think about, like, I don't think just LED lighting is, is something that, could we make it more of a green approach to this? Like getting the, getting the, you know, district vehicles to go, you know, either hybrid or, you know, moving away from gas, same thing with gas leaf blowers, all those things, like to start to make this more a composite where it's not just tackling an infrastructure thing and doing overall, you know, review.
You've touched on a couple of different things, but yes, there are different, you know, they are, for example, you asked about gas leaf blowers. They have tried, they are trying different types of equipment, purchasing equipment to see if it works or doesn't work. There are different things that this district is doing, trying to become more green. And also, a capital bond, you really can't buy a truck with a capital bond. That's just, that's not a construction, so that's not something that gets covered with a capital bond. That would be your normal, everyday operating budget. So, and we always, of course, do look, as Marie said, to find things that are as environmentally sensible as possible.
And if you could just speak to, I think, is it later in the president's...
Yes.
Yes, if we get there.
Should we wait until that moment?
Yes.
That gives us a reason to go there?
Don't.
Hi, my name is Paula Harrington, and I live at thirty-seven Maple Street. I'm the little dotted line where the square is, where the fence is. And I'm just gonna add to what everyone else, all of my neighbors have said here, I'm not happy about this. And one thing I wanna bring up, which is a nice lead in to what the gentleman just said, is about the noise. Even when we moved into the neighborhood twelve years ago and the temporary buildings were up, there was a generator that was running all year, all summer, and it was quite loud. And it was the most incredible thing when you took it down. And I saw the cherry, the cherry trees, and it was, it's incredible. And now, what's gonna be in this building if it's not green and hybrid? I mean, it's gonna be gasoline, and if you're gonna be fixing things, there's certainly gonna be generators and leaf blowers, and it is loud. It's loud. The other really big concern I have is about the traffic. Well, this is not just one or two trucks. Now you're gonna put the whole district, all the vehicles from the whole district. And I can tell you, does that include the lawn mowers? Will that include all of that, too?
Yeah.
Okay. So I can tell you right now, I have a picket fence. You have the, the school, I think must have put the chain link fence up. I don't know, 'cause it was there when I, when I moved in. We have a white picket fence. And there have been instances where the lawn mowers have destroyed the front of the fence from people flying up Maple Street, smashing into the fence, and you can see it. I still haven't found out who to talk to about this, but I haven't replaced the fence yet. So there are holes in my fence from this. And they come up, it's so dangerous because of the speed that they're coming up. They're going between the, the fire hydrant and my fence, and they're flying around the corner. They can hit a student so easily because that's a blind spot. And see it for yourself. Next time you walk by to walk up to Dow's Lane, there's nobody. I mean, it's, it's very dangerous. And I can't imagine, if you have the whole district there, what's gonna happen. And I'm not gonna replace my fence until we fix this. So I just wanted to add that. I'm really, really concerned, not only about the eyesore, but about the traffic and the noise. Thank you.
I was just, if I may, I'm sorry. It's your meeting. I certainly appreciate your comments and the, the concerns that you present with respect to lawn mowers and vehicle traffic. We'd love to have that as a side conversation because that, that's something that, that you're sharing that's, that's new. So, to my attention. So, so I certainly would encourage you to reach out to Carol or Gary, and, and let's review that situation and make sure we can rectify that if it's in fact district employees and district equipment. We need to address it.
Right. So again, I think you'll, all of your contact information is available on our website, IrvingtonSchools.com. So if you're a neighbor or if you observe something that needs to be addressed, you know, Gary and Carol are probably your first line in terms of being able to be responsive.
Yeah, when it comes to facilities and operations.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Andrew Raybold of twenty-eight Willow Street. So we're also adjacent to the school. Just a brief question of clarification, which I'd like to address to the gentleman in front of me, Eric, I believe. In your discussion of the detailed changes to the places, to the plan, I think you mentioned the visual impact of equipment on the apron. Is that correct?
Eric, I'm sorry, come to the mic, please.
I didn't hear your question.
Could you repeat his question?
Yeah, I thought you mentioned the, the visual impact of equipment on the apron in your discussion of the, the building.
The apron?
The detail of that.
Right, there were the, the idea was understanding that there are concerns about distance, but, but the idea was, would be to rotate that building ninety degrees so that the apron, as with the garage entrances are facing north, as far away as possible from the nearest neighbor. And probably the clutter of plows, et cetera, et cetera, on the apron would be shielded from that person by the building itself.
And what about, what about, I'm sorry, I'll help out here. What about for neighbors who are on the north side?
Well, the...
No, there, there's a number of, of homes.
There's a large, large tree.
Would there be, would there be opportunity to put other kinds of landscaping in place?
Yeah, yeah. I don't wanna, I don't wanna oversimplify it and think that if the board were to move forward with this aspect of the project, that to say that an existing tree would be the resolution to providing any kind of shading, any screening with landscaping would not be the answer. So I, as, as your neighbor, I wanna certainly assure you that, that there would be an extensive look at what that landscaping would look like to, to screen the building and, and to shield the, the apron area before, to certainly not have it as your entire view from your property.
Absolutely. I just, I wasn't trying to be flippant, just pointing out that the large specimen tree is going to remain.
Yes.
And that will be landscaping, you know, it'll be compatible with what is there.
Well, I appreciate that comment, but I had a slightly different point I wanted to make, which is that we're talking here about building a structure to store equipment indoors, and yet it seems like we're talking about having equipment outdoors anyway. It seems that this is contrary to the purpose that was stated for the building in the first place.
I, I think, Eric, we can speak to the use of the property. The, the full intention, and if Eric represented it differently, I apologize, the intention is that the equipment will be stored with inside the structure itself. That when we think of snow plows, when we think of lawn mowers, that equipment would be inside the building. So we're not taking something that would be sitting outside. If you can recall the picture of the plow sitting outside up against the back of the Dow's Lane cafeteria, the intention would be in the, that that type of equipment would be stored within the facility. I also do wanna clarify that...
There was a question that was posed at one point this evening.
Email asking about... Sounds like my mic is cutting out. That the, about fuel, and there is no plan to store fuel. There's no, we're not having a tank outside of the building, thing of that nature.
That gets towards the, the second clarification I wanted, is that this was described, I think, originally as a storage facility for vehicles and equipment, but it also sounds like it's going to be a maintenance facility, possibly with oil and other materials involved. Is that correct? We're actually talking about a maintenance facility rather than a storage facility?
Basic maintenance.
Yeah. Maintenance is something along the lines that I would have in my garage at, at my own home. I would also say that, you know, the idea of having workshop space to be able to, to, to maintain and repair lawn mowers and the like and other pieces of furniture equipment that may be utilized across the district. So I would, I wouldn't picture, you seen, there's not gonna be fifty gallon drums of anything. The idea of what you may, you would see on the shelves in your home, bags of, of salt. You know, quite frankly, when we think, when we think of the salting that we do of our roadways and our parking lots, it was referenced how we actually purchase that through the village's supply. But when we think about what we're using on our, our walkways, we're buying the bags of salt like we would at our own homes. The challenge is that we're having to make regular runs to do that because we don't have any facility to store the salt. So there would be items such as that, you know, we'd buy pallets of salt that would be stored in the space as well.
Do, do we store pesticides, herbicides? You don't use pesticides, herbicides?
We'll have to.
It's not permissible in the public schools.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I, I do wanna add that Tanya Hunt, who lives in your neighborhood, had actually reached out to the board about doing a little walkthrough with board members, and she offered to arrange something. So she's gonna be your point person, and that just happened today. So there's no dates or anything, but that's something also we're planning on doing. Yeah.
Dela Lenz again. Just a couple of questions. Maybe you could post the B and G minutes and maybe post when the next meetings are so that you can get greater community engagement because that is part of our strategic plan. And I know that y'all wanna get through the meeting, but this is a lot of money to us and it's affecting our community. So I think more opportunities besides a question and answer where we kind of feel like we're being dictated to would be beneficial for our whole community and follow our strategic plan.
We never, we never said that.
Can you clarify that statement?
We didn't, we never said that.
It wasn't meant in a derogatory way. It was just meant as more engaging opportunities.
And we said more dates would be coming. We never said that this was it.
No, I know, but I, it's more of a question than answer. I'm, I'm just going by...
I don't see anybody rushing out of here either, by the way, just to make a quick comment.
I'm just going by past history.
Yeah, I know. I'm just going by what you just said, and I don't appreciate it. Thank you.
My second is, did we look at behind the high school?
Yes. We did look at behind the high school. It is, there is a, that's where Field Point is. There's a big hill there, and it's very narrow.
Oh, I was talking where the...
And, I mean, ideally, that would be the best location. Unfortunately, and we wouldn't hear boo from anyone, it's just, it's not big enough. There's a hill there, it would be astronomical. There's rocks there. It's not possible.
And I'd also say that the hill spaced behind the campus is actually considered a fire lane if, in an emergency situation, if need to get fire equipment behind the school. That would be an access point.
And you had talked about the other components of the budget, about the bond. So I just wanted to touch on those. And I know the state of New York mandates a five-year facility plan in order to avoid stress. And I noticed in the last budget meeting, the last budget discussion, is, you know, when, on the budget, it says that others are too, simply too costly to include in the budget and require a bond, a bonded capital project. But the five-year facility plan is really to maintain our facilities. I know, working with the Budget Task Force, one of our recommendations was to keep up to date, whether it's putting more money into the facilities plan to maintain our facilities, to avoid greater costs later. Because I'm looking at what is, and just a brief skim, the bleachers, that was recommended. I had the facilities plan from two thousand and eleven, but I think it was actually before, it was at least by two thousand and eleven, it was in the facilities plan. Exterior lighting for the campus and high school. The paving Dow's Lane, Main Street School and the high school, that's been since two thousand and eleven. Sidewalks, MS Gym, High School, Dow's, Main Street, since two thousand and eleven. Roof, Main Street Gym, Dow's Lane, Main Street Gym, Dow's Lane, Main Street School, since two thousand and eleven. Roof, Main Street Gym, Dow's High School, since 2011. Lighting at the Main Street School, since 2011. The state of New York, really, the reason for the five-year facility plan is to avoid future stress and to-
But, Della, a five-year facilities plan is a roadmap of things that need to be done. It doesn't necessarily mean you're going to get them all done in a budget. Many of the things in a five-year facility plan can't be done in your annual budget. And the state just basically says, if you have things that are in your plan and you don't address them when you do a capital project, they aren't going to approve the capital project because you didn't address things in a capital, in your five-year facility plan. But you can't expect to have everything that's in your plan be done on an annual basis in your budget. So it's a roadmap, it's things we need to do. It's not the be all, end all that we have to do that this year or we're going to be shut down as a school district.
And I would like to add, I mean, Della, you've been part of our budget meetings for years. You know it is a balancing act of everything. Facilities, instruction, everything. We balance, it's not like Dowslane has a bucket of money, we're only going to spend this much, and we're only going to spend this much at the Main Street School. It's a balance of the great, you know, sometimes it's who needs more money, what the needs are, facilities-wise. But it's always a balancing act. And those items that you mentioned, some of these things are extremely costly, and we can't do it out of the operating budget. We try, there is money allocated, we do repairs. The maintenance guy that we added, definitely, we've seen things are lasting longer because he's able to maintain and take care of certain things instead of reacting and fixing things as they break. So we are trying, but we can't, we can't afford it all. I mean, you look at that list, we cannot.
No, I do understand that, and we did look at it when we were on the Budget Task Force. And I guess what I'm asking the board is, when you're going over the buildings and grounds, do we allocate more funds to maintain our facilities so that we're not always going out for a bond? Because-
Della, I mean, again, you know, everyone, A, yes, B, you can't monopolize time. I apologize, but we have other people who want to talk. You've now been up multiple times. We do need to address the other issues. It is, again, simply impossible in the budget that we have to address our capital needs on a comprehensive basis. We've now said that repeatedly. I don't know how much more clearly we can say that, but it is not feasible to address things like a boiler that costs $600,000 in our annual expenditures. It just isn't. So I respectfully say it is time for us to move on. So if someone else has a question, they can do so, but you can't just get up here and monopolize the microphone. I'm sorry.
I apologize. It was the second time that I got up.
And comments are truly must be limited to three minutes. And there's people still waiting, so I do think we need to move on.
Okay. My other question is, how much money do we have in the capital bond, the capital reserve fund that we voted for a couple of years ago?
What is that number? It's around three hundred?
It's a very small number, under $500,000 at this point, and it's basically maintained to use to, for the, probably to upgrade the fields in ten years. It's a ten-year outlook.
Thank you. I just want to add that certainly, in terms of the annual capital spending, that's something that I'm interested in as well, because we do have a lot of wear and tear on an annual basis, but it is the balancing act that Maria shared. So when we go through the budget process, which everyone, I invite you back on Tuesday because we have a nice meeting related to the launch of our annual budget process, that's the type of question that will certainly surface as well. So thank you.
And also, if anyone has any questions specifically about the bond, there's a specific email, capitalbond, not plural, right? And that goes to B&amp;G, Chris, and Carol. And do you get them as well, Gary? We saved Gary from those. So if you guys have any follow-up questions or comments, feel free to send that because it goes to all of us.
And we have, right up there on the homepage, the section about this with an FAQ, which will continue to evolve as we realize that there are questions that we want to make sure people understand.
Hi, Cheryl Branwine. I live at 85 South Buckout Street, which is below the basketball court and a little bit north. But for, my kids are now at Main Street School. I have twins in fourth grade. But for four years, we walked up the path behind the basketball court to get to Dow's Lane. I think everyone who has children in the neighborhood uses those walking paths to get our children to school. I wrote the board a letter about this, and I won't reiterate all my points, but I was, I was struck in trying to get up to speed about this project, because we really learned about it this week, that your FAQs talk about the priorities. And the number one priority was the safety and security of the students, and number two was student needs, and number three was storage and protection of resources. And I understand Gary would love to have a facility, and I think we'd all be happy to have Gary have a good facility for the vehicles and other equipment for the district. But I know you hear us, that this location is not safe. It's not safe for the many small children that are walking and playing around this area. And to have trucks coming down that path, going into a storage facility, when my kids played for years in the trees that are west of the basketball court, you know, not to mention the impact on those trees, but it's just not safe to have all these vehicles and equipment in that location. Someone pointed out, maybe at the high school, where the C curve is, I don't know if you can go back to that screen, but you were doing some construction, I think, in that-
Okay, I'm just going to interject. I know everyone has their ideas on different locations. I can't say how many times we've looked at every single conceivable piece of property in the district for alternate locations. Right now, this is the only viable location. So-
I don't think we accept that.
Brian, I'm just going to counter here. I'm certainly, as a trustee who's understanding the concerns that I think Gary vividly shared, want to make sure that we have explored. I know that you've explored many, and I respect and appreciate that. I think that, I can't say enough about the work that you've done. But for folks here and for myself, we're always, I know the efforts that we have gone through to reach out to the village and other members of our community to find other options. So I want to underscore what you're saying, but I don't want to show an inflexibility in terms of entertaining ideas. We can't go down the road of spending a lot of time and money on every idea, but if someone were to surface an idea that hasn't been thought of, I think we should be open to that.
Michael, I agree with that. It's just that we, we've, we have looked at every piece of property in the district, and frankly, it just doesn't seem that there is somewhere else.
Let's hear, what location are you referring to?
Well, if you can go back to the high school slide.
The current loading dock is, I believe.
I don't have a picture of that. And if I can just say that-
I do think if we start to hear repetition of ideas, I'll ask that we-
Understood, and I don't want to take too much time because I did send a letter to the board, but-
And I do want to make clear that we are responsive to letters. I think we got yours yesterday, and we hope to respond to it shortly. Thank you.
No problem. I just, I would say that anything around the high school, middle school, toward the front where that curve is-
We looked at that location. It was not suitable.
Are you talking about, hold on. I just want to make sure.
Please don't interrupt, sir.
Hey, I'm going to, I'm going to let, I'm going to let Maria take the floor here. Can we turn our attention to her?
Yeah, that first little, no, 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 further up. I guess it's hard for you to reach, but straight north of where your hand is. Straight up, yeah.
Right above you, right above you, that little seat.
All right, we picked the wrong person to try and point.
Michael, why don't you-
No, we didn't consider that.
No, we did. We did look at that.
Is that it?
This area right now is actually road, right? And so what we're doing is, with the recon for the land, as a reference report, it's actually elevated in the park. We did, what we did explore was this area grew here and actually building off the old structure. And there were limitations because of the amount of space and the storage. We didn't look at building something out to the middle of the roadway at this point, or we were trying to prove the area's place.
It just looks like something to consider. You have, you know, new parking spots going in, but maybe that could be the new storage facility. You don't have homes there. You have an angry mob of people here that were really upset. This is our community, this is where our kids play. This is not safe for the students. And I think student safety should be paramount to vehicle storage.
Yeah, I mean, what I-
You should also, no, hold on. You should also know, you said there's no one there. That actually is Riverview Road and all of the residents there. And actually, right across the street is the path that all the students and everyone who lives on that side, Riverview Road, that is actually exactly where they walk and walk across. And the kids walking up High School Drive, that is where they go.
Yeah, I confess, I don't know much.
No, no, no. So what I'm saying is-
You'll be there soon enough.
But what we're saying is, is we really are trying to balance, you know, we talk about neighbors, talk about the kids, safety, honestly. And it's good questions, you know, we're here to answer your questions. But we even looked at a plot of land coming up the hill that's owned by the church.
You put it there, then you have an angry mob from that corner of the neighborhood.
Right.
There are no, there are no areas that don't bring in-
Angry mob, honestly. Like, I mean, the area, I love the area off of Ferris. I mean, I love the idea-
Not the one by Field Point, though.
There is none by Field Point. But like, you know, the area by Fer- what?
I said, where do you fasten?
I live actually right up against the school. When I moved here, all of this was open, grass and fields.
Practice fields, yeah.
Practice fields, and my girls, who are now in college, and they, with their little, everyone played here, and it was all open space. And now it's all buildings, so.
Can I just make one last comment, and then I'll turn the floor over to someone else?
Okay.
But we've gotten federal grant money for the Safe Routes to School program. We've initiated the walking school bus. We have a lot of pedestrian-friendly initiatives in the village, and this seems to fly in the face of all of those, that progress. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello, my name is Eric Ollie. You can hear me, can't you?
Yes.
I just, to the gentleman's point, he was talking about fossil fuels and gas-powered leaf blowers, et cetera, and vehicles. Couldn't the, if this shed was to be made, couldn't it be included into the design to have a charging port so that we can possibly move really, really quickly to hybrid or electric vehicles?
Well, that's something to add, obviously, yeah.
If you broke this-
The answer's yes.
We can run the electric line so that we're set up for that already.
It feels like there's a way to compromise.
But is that, is that an idea that, I guess, would that be an annual budget item later?
Yeah, we talked about it.
You guys have covered a lot of ground.
We've had a lot of meetings.
Hi, Pat Nettorelli. I live at 29 Maple Street. We're looking at a building that's 3,500 square feet, has a maintenance structure. What if, that sounds like it would handle all the vehicles that the district has now. What if you did something more modest? What if you went to a 2,000-square-foot building? Maybe you don't house everything in that building, maybe you, but you can still do the rehab work on the vehicles. And you look at that hillside on the east side of the football field, and you combine it with the storage building that you're proposing over there. Because it seems to me, what you're doing is you're proposing a non-residential building in the middle of a residential area. You've got the co-ops on the west side, you've got Mr. Schiff's to the south, you've got Maple Street, Willow and Oak to the north. It's completely residential there, and you want to put it in basically an industrial building in there. You're going to be doing work on vehicles, and I got to believe, in the summertime, those doors are going to be open. And if you turn that, those doors facing north, Paul is going to be hearing everything there. I think, plus, beyond the copper beech tree, there's a cops of evergreens on the west side of the asphalt area right now. You start digging down and start putting in a foundation there, those trees are going to be affected. There are several multi-trunk trees that are on the east side of where you're proposing to put the building, where you want to put the driveway going up to Dow's Lane, and those trees are going to be impacted, probably going to lose those trees. Even if you move the driveway farther north, you're going to end up losing the evergreens that are separating the base, the proposed basketball field, basketball court, from where you want to put the storage facility. So I think it's just really a bad location for the building, and I think if you do something a bit more modest, maybe you could look at other areas, and there might be something that could be done, which would be a compromise for the people who live in the Maple Street, Oak Street, and the Buckout, and Mr. Schiff's. And it would accomplish what the superintendent of grounds needs for, for the work that has to be done. Thanks.
Thank you for your suggestions.
I will say that-
You got to pull the mic up.
Nope, sorry. I will say that it's interesting, just the additional parking, I think, is more important than we're speaking about. I can just say from my position, I live, I live just down on the backside of the hill in Cedar Ridge, and for the last six years, I want to say just about every day, maybe one day a week, I get a break. People drive their, drop their children off in front of my house, because they can walk right up the back path, and the kids, seniors who can't get spots up here, park all along the street, residents can't park there. The kids rip the windows off, not the mirrors, you know, they come by and they knock the window, like they do with the mailboxes. So I think it's important not to understate in all of this, the, you know, not in relation to the building that we're talking about. But the notion of adding parking here, I think, is also really important to stress in terms of how it impacts other areas in the community, right? I know even the Field Point, that driveway, people are always coming, there's a lot of danger up there. So adding the parking should, I think we should frame it as an important part of sort of public safety to a certain degree.
I can say, following up on that, that the comment you raised is important because one of the things that we were very mindful of was not taking away parking. Yes, we wanted to add it, but taking away a spot in building anything that impacts parking that we presently have does have a ripple effect in all the neighborhoods.
I think anybody, and you know better than anyone, Deb, is, the issue we run into is that we are in a built space, and there are no happy answers, but we can continue to strive to do the best we can. And there's a lot of suggestions out here that certainly can be considered. I have terrible medium-term memory right now, I don't know if that's a thing. Right outside your office and below is the cafeteria, there's, there's a generator there, there's garbage pickups there.
It's an air conditioning unit, yeah.
Air conditioning unit, yeah. We did- You looked at that area, and that's not-
And I'm wondering how much closer that is to Mr. Chef's house.
Yeah.
Well, I just think you have such nice screening there. It's already got traffic, it's already got deliveries. You've already got air conditioning.
We looked, we did look at it, it was too, we would, it's too, it's too narrow of a space that we-
And then you have the classrooms right there, it was too narrow.
Yeah, okay. Well, let's, Ed, we'll have some more opportunity. Okay.
We talk about keeping Irvington green.
Yeah, I'm sorry, could you share your name?
We talk about-
I'm sorry, could you share your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Christina DeCarlo. I have incoming kindergarteners, twin girls, in September, and we talk about keeping Irvington green. Let's not lose that. I'm horrified at the thought of losing that huge, amazing, beautiful tree. We don't, we can't mow down historical sites for a reason.
Can I ask a question? I just, because I feel like this is an important venue to make sure that there are factual information being sent out to the community at large. Is that tree being removed?
No.
The concern being raised is that the root structure-
I understand the roots and the thing, but the tree is not being slated to be removed. I've heard that mentioned a couple of times. I just want to make clear that the tree is not slated to be removed.
And we did have one gentleman here who offered to help us with the-
With the roots. Yeah, I heard the whole thing with the roots, and I get it, I just, the tree's not being removed.
But over the years, five years from now, it could help, and it could help be whatever.
But I just want to differentiate for people watching and listening, that it could be versus will be are totally different things. Right? I just, it's important, factually speaking, that's all. I'm not saying your concern is invalid, and it's not real, but it's, it's-
It won't be actively removed.
Right, I just, that's-
Immediately. It could.
All right, but, thank you very much, and I will, I think, Brian, you'd like to move on with the presentation, and I'd like to, I'd like to help you with that.
I would certainly like to do that, and go back to sleep.
And I do want to thank you, Brian, because I almost literally dragged you in here.
And, and I do want to thank you, Brian, because I almost literally dragged you in here. There's some really great information-
Say and listen to the rest, all of you guys who have little kids, you're going to like some of the rest of the stuff.
Well, it's important because- Yeah.
Me too.
Very good. Well, the, the presentation will be available online, you can jump to our one hour forty-five in. So thank you very much. And we hope you'll, you'll look at the rest of this.
Okay.
All right.
So, talking about some of the energy efficiency initiatives that are part of the project, this includes replacing the boiler at Dow's Lane, replacing the exterior wall and shade panels at the high school. There's pictures of that for those of you who don't know what the shade panel is. Replace the classroom univents at the high school. Those are the ways we maintain the temperature in those classrooms. Install some window solar and safety film in the districts, this is going back to what we were talking about before. The safety film also will have some environmental impacts. Replacing the lights across the district with LED lights. The plan is to do this through an energy contract, which will use the savings on an annual basis from the utility bills to pay for the upgrade. And then also adding air conditioning to the mar gym, the campus gym, the gym at Main Street School and Dow's Lane Gym. So here's a picture of the boiler and the need for repairs there. So as I mentioned, if you look on the right, that is a representative picture of the shade panel, which has cracks and needs to be replaced, and our outdated univents. So one of the things that's been talked about over time is the idea of adding central air conditioning to all of our buildings. We did some initial exploratory work with that. The very initial estimates, which are likely low, were about eight and a half million dollars, which in the scope of the project is just not feasible. So we looked to then move on. And as you see here, the spaces that are currently air-conditioned are the cafeteria and science building, the campus library, the CPR room where we are tonight, the theater, the Dow's cafeteria, the Dow's library and computer lab, and all the main offices and guidance offices. Numerous classrooms have window AC units. You see here the percentages by school ranges from 28% at the high school up to 69% at Main Street. And the idea is to, over time, continually add those room units to achieve cooling at 100% of the instructional spaces over time, in addition to some of the common spaces.
Well, I think you missed one key point because you're not feeling good. The proposal is to add the AC to the gyms.
Yes. I, I thought I'd said that initially.
Oh, you did?
That's the prior slide.
Okay.
Right, I mean, I guess for, for people who have, I mean, the advantage of a gym and air conditioning in the gym is that all the students pass through there at a given point in the day. So it provides relief in the September and June periods where it can be extremely hot.
Right.
And also in terms of testing for students, you know-
That's part of his presentation.
Am I stealing your thunder? I'm just sorry.
It's okay.
Can I, can I, can I just ask one?
Can you let us go through the presentation and then I- That was one of the points, was that? It was, but he's stealing his thunder.
It's, it's okay.
He's going to be doing his presentation. Continue, Brian.
But we're moving on for air conditioning.
No, this is the last part of Eric's, so if you want to say more thing on air conditioning, now is the time.
Go ahead, Michael, go ahead, please.
Could we take the words "energy efficiency" off the page that says "air conditioning"? It, it's the opposite of energy efficiency in my mind. And while I agree that, you know, students and staff definitely struggle with the heat and that this is an important consideration, I don't see this as energy efficiency.
Okay.
Thank you.
Find its own headquarter, its own topic then, okay.
Yes. So this is definitely energy efficiency, which is upgrading to LED lighting throughout the district. So that will allow us to save on energy costs, bulb replaces, replacements, and provide just better light throughout the district. And we are currently exploring doing this through an energy contract and- excuse me. So, and the energy contract would free up funds in the bond for other projects and would be paid out of the savings. We've already met with a company that has done this in several schools in the area. They, and it was a comprehensive audit that they did of all of the light fixtures in the district and what that would entail. Mike Richter even came as part of the presentation, so for you hockey fans out there, he's one of the people out there who does this. You know, so some of the other considerations were looking at solar or alternative energy sources. You know, we are committed to trying to be as green as possible and eco-friendly. You know, one of the challenges with solar is the need for new roofs and the large spaces that are needed for that. And at this point, solar just doesn't seem to be a option that would be cost-effective. It also locks you into long-term agreements and we're not sure about the cost benefits of that. So at this point, it's not something that's being considered, but we are always looking for additional green ideas and energy efficiencies. So I guess at this point, before we move on to modernizing, I don't know if anyone had questions on the last part of the presentation.
Was there, there was a story last week about a district that signed some, something so that they could claim to be 0% or 100% renewables? Is that, I mean, that's usually just paying for whoever's providing it to be wind power, that kind of thing?
There, I mean, I wouldn't say we're giving up on the idea of solar, wind power, any of those things. I think there's a lot of work to be done on that and we couldn't do that in the timeframe of what we're trying to do here.
Right, in this case, though, I don't think they actually put it on their property. Their energy is from-
Putting it somewhere else, yeah. They're buying it from another source, okay. But we're not giving up on that. I mean, I think that, you know, as part of facilities and operations, it's something I'm always going to be looking at to, to explore the options, to see as the, as the technology develops, what we can do. We can always do a different type of energy performance contract to achieve some of these things, which, you know, is a different vehicle. And then usually what you're doing there is you're financing that through the savings you're getting from the energy. So it's always on the table, I don't want to say to the board that it's off the table. I think we have to keep that in mind. We could bring that to you at any point, once, you know, we're comfortable with technology. New York State has done a lot of the work for us on some of the things that we, there are certain vetted companies you can work with. It's just that right now, I think, the, from a business point of view, to lock in 25-year rate on, on electrical, when you're not really sure of the innovations that are going to happen in five, 10 years, is a little bit of a risky, you know, proposition. You know, we could get better advice than what I'm thinking right now and I'll change my mind. So I certainly have an open mind about it. I just think at this point, with this particular project, we couldn't, you know, do, do it all right now. So let's leave it on the table, but not this minute.
Anyone else, any comments for move on to the next topic? So our last topic is modernizing the learning spaces and we have various proposals for inclusion in the project. It's reconfiguring the library space at both Dow's Lane and the campus. So the library that everyone walked through this evening to get here is, is the campus library that we're talking about addressing. Also addressing the needs at the theater, updating the science and computer labs at the Main Street School and dealing with the casework for our art and music. Just throw it. Thank you. So modernizing learning spaces, starting with Dow's Lane. The idea is to turn the Dow's Lane library into a creative suite, which would include both the library and two rooms for Project Lead the Way. So it would include getting rid of the fixed furniture in those areas, new flooring, and giving those spaces more flexibility. I think we have some pictures of some of the ideas. So this would be one of the spaces that's converted to a PLTW space. And, you know, this is your old traditional library with fixed-position shelving. And the idea would be to use flexible furniture to try to address a more modern space, which is exactly what we see here, which is the idea of, like, if you look at the bottom one there, that's furniture that can be moved out of the way. So if you want to create larger areas in the library, you can do so. Partition the spaces in different ways and have different comfortable seating nooks. I think, you know, everyone always loves the idea on the top there of those little carols built into the wall. So, you know, we'd be looking at just different, exciting options to bring the spaces into the 21st century. So at the campus library, the idea would also be to modernize that space. I think if we go to, is it the next slide Carol that shows how it'd be? Now, yeah, so that's, what's the next slide, the other slide with the, there, with the overall floor plan? Thanks. So the idea would be to try to turn the library into both a, you know, dual zone, where you have both a quiet zone and an active zone, where the orange would be, and blue areas would be partitioned by a glass wall. And you could have, in the orange space, people could do group work, project work. It wouldn't have to be a quiet area where the blue area would be your more traditional quiet study area. We'd also look to incorporate some offices and space for various people who work out of the library. And then on the upper level of the library, look to add in some study carols and other types of new furniture in order to improve the usability of that space. Yes, again, here are some Ilsevstock photos of the types of spaces that would be created with open glass walls for the offices or conference space. And the idea of using flexible furniture in the library that can be moved around. And this is the current pictures of both the PLTW and computer lab at the Main Street School. And the idea is to convert from a fixed desktop model to furniture that will support all devices. So this is an example of the reconfiguration, where you'd have all the, if you see like those triangular desks at the right are then also combined into the four tops at the bottom left. And in, you know, various configurations to allow for different uses with our, you know, now more wired list devices. And again, at the PLTW classroom, we'd be removing the fixed high-science-type desks that a lot of us grew up with to a more modern and flexible space for PLTW. So again, here are some stock photos of what that space could look like with the different types of flexible furniture. So casework, if you see in that picture, that's our, one of our current art rooms, which frankly, we just don't have good storage solutions for our art and music. And this is one of the things that we're looking to address here. And here are some possible solutions of the casework that we could look to employ. Again, dedicated locker storage for our musical instruments as opposed to the current situation, which is not the best situation. So now we get to the financial, oh, yes.
Just a quick, couple of questions and comments about the flexible learning spaces.
Yeah.
One, I just wanted to comment as a former principal who had a strings program in his building, both guitars, violins, and a pretty, pretty expansive program. When I entered the building as the principal, there were no storage spaces for the equipment. And I could see how it was literally starting to die. Like, the equipment was starting to literally mow, it was just not good. So I was able to figure out how to do it. We built the storage and it changed, it literally changed everything. It changed the dynamic of the classroom. So I just wanted to make that point for people who haven't been on the inside to see what that looks like. The second piece is, in terms of the, the Project Lead the Way spaces, have, did we pursue, have we pursued sort of like Makerspace grants, you know, different avenues around? Because there are lots of different, just occurred to me that we should look into at some point, ways to build out those spaces? Because there are ways to do it, like through lots of different-
Part of the, the biggest cost here is just removing those old science tables. Remember, that school was a big science room with the gas and the water coming up. So when we remove that and redo the flooring, that's when we have the opportunity to design the room. So, you know, there's everything on the table still for that and how you achieve that.
So this is really just about construction, not about the actual-
So it's construction of just, you know, redoing the room, taking out the old-
There's, there's, yes, not alleviating opportunities down the road from pursuing.
So we can, we could- That part hasn't been designed yet, it's just the budgeting for taking away the-
Creating the flexible space itself.
And we know that when you take that out, you need to redo a floor. I mean, there's just certain things you know that you have to do. And that's what our experts have advised us on. So we're not thinking, oh, we'll just do this and it's going to cost no money to just take furniture out. It's going to, it's going to cost us some money.
Finally, the other day Beth and I, Ms. Proper and I, had the opportunity to participate in World Read Aloud Day. And when it was over, we sat in the flexible learning space in Dow's Lane. And I thought it was worth sharing that experience because we both actually marveled over how beautiful it was. And how, you know, this is, if we were to model this kind of stuff in other buildings, the opportunities it would provide to children. And then sure enough, you know, would I like to see more kids using it and see more teachers take advantage of it? I would say that would be a really important piece because, well, we sat there for about 45 minutes, I would say.
Yeah, but it's used for special events. It's the Dow's Lane Annex, we used to do international events there. It's a great space.
It's beautiful.
And it's much improved from when it was an empty space. You're also there on a very different, unusual day.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So you can't make that-
No, no, I would just love to see like a via, like it's, it's, it provides such an opportunity. I want the community to know that it really does provide such an opportunity for the community.
Well, when I got a tour of it, because I haven't had kids at Dow's Lane in a very long time and Carol took me there, I happened to have witnessed some, yeah.
It's very cool.
So the money part of it. So as we've said repeatedly, the goal is to remain budget-neutral and not add taxes for this because we replace our expiring debt with, with the new project. Currently, rates are around 3%. You know, we're expecting rates to move up over time. But if you look at the bottom chart there, you know, while a more likely scenario may be a three and a half or 3.75% rate, which would allow us to borrow, you know, up to as much as 20 million, we're using a conservative number of trying to peg at the four and a quarter rate. And also assuming only that 75% of the project is adable at a 17% rate, where it's likely that more like 90% of the project, we hope, will try not to be adable. But we're still using these conservative assumptions so that we can have our costs managed. So, you know, we're certainly not looking to borrow the absolute max possible and just get the biggest part of money out there. We were thoughtful in both what our needs are and what would be a responsible borrowing amount. And that's how we came up with the overall scope of the project.
And one thing I'll add to that is that, you know, I, I listened to a lot of economists' viewpoints on borrowing and yield curves and things. And right now, it's a very flat yield curve. The long-term borrowing hasn't changed. Even though the rate environment for short-term borrowing has gone up, the long-term borrowing has not. So it's an interesting phenomenon and they do expect it to stay for several years. Again, we have a political election coming up in two years that could change things. There's other factors that we don't know about. There could be a world event, a disaster, or some other thing. So I think we need to stay conservative. I'm optimistic that it would be lower, you know, much lower. And then we would, you know, obviously have opportunity to do other things with that money if, if it didn't come to be. So plan for the worst, hope for the best is kind of our strategy at this point.
And I think you just confirmed why we really appreciate your role as Assistant Superintendent of Business, kind of stuff you find fun.
Carol, I'm with you, I find it fun too. So there you go. So at the, and if, when we get to the line items, you'll see that the current total is about 18.3 million. So that is, for all the recommendations here, that is the total at this point. And this is based on the work we've done throughout the process with both H2M and Trident to arrive at as developed cost estimates as we can at this point. But given the amount of work that's been put in, we do feel that we've developed good estimates to- estimates to use at this point in time. So if you now look by category, you have about 2.6 million for safety and security, about 8.2 million in the infrastructure category, about 3.5 for energy efficiency and about 3.9 for the minorization of learning spaces. If you want to look at by location, close to $6 million for Dow's Lane, $2 million at Main Street and about $10 million at the campus. And again, you know, this is all based on the work that Trident and H2M has done to date with their sketches and engineering review.
That last slide is just a reminder when, as trustees, we all take buildings and grounds tour when we first start and I'm always impressed that the Main Street School, our oldest building, continues to be quite resilient.
So here are, you know, we start getting to the detail of the project costs. I'm not going to just sit here and read every single number, but if we can go back, so this is the, you know, the detail cost. I just did want to point out one thing where, you know, I had mentioned earlier that the vestibules were not a large cost. The high school entry vestibule, the majority of that cost is not related to the actual vestibule. It's due to the site work and the grading work to turn it into an ADA compliant entryway. So it's that type of work that is really the significant cost there, not the actual addition of the vestibule.
Can you ballpark it at all? Is it 70?
No, well, if you look at what the cost of the vestibule is at Dow's, I'm sure Veronica could address it, but my guess is that would be probably a fair representation of the order of magnitude that you're looking at.
You want to say more, you can say more.
Well, is Dow's twice as much because it's two entrances? Does it store there?
Dow's does have two entrances.
Yeah, that's okay.
So then it'd probably be less, it'd probably be closer to.
A little bit, it's a slightly larger spot, landing spot, but, you know.
So the swipe card door entry and the vestibule cost the same amount at Dow's Lane?
So the swipe door entry, I mean, what you're doing there is you're wiring doors, well, you're, you're basically wiring doors or you're, if you're doing a wireless system, you're still connecting things to every door. So it's intensive in terms of the labor intensive and each door lock, you know, is expensive. It's not, they're not cheap door locks. This is, this is a system, so. And that number does come down. I actually expect that number to be lower by the time we get ready to do this, once again, but, you know, again, be conservative with that estimate and then hope for something to be a little bit lower. I don't want you to be disappointed in that when bids come in and we can't do something. I'm trying not to do that.
Yeah, so, yeah, those are, the detail for the security piece. We have details throughout for all of the other pieces. Yeah, I think at this point it's probably best to see if the trustees have any further questions at, at this point, based on the, on the material so far. Silence, wow.
Well, I have the hard question. The hard question is how are we going to get this man his garage and satisfy the community at the same time? That's really the question, right? At the end of the day, at the end of this wonderful presentation? I'll just put it on the table.
Yeah, I did want to ask in terms of the estimation, maybe there's various, depending on what you're looking at, you, you use different methods for estimating, but if you could give us some explanation about how you develop these estimates, that'd be appreciated.
Kevin, you're on.
Why don't you give you a shot at the mic there?
I'm glad I probably had a chance to listen. Thank you for having me tonight. Yeah, so the way that we provide estimates here, and I remember that everything is very schematic in nature right now, so just, just like with your schedule, we like to take some conservative approaches to some things until things are further developed as we go through this process so that we can define or redefine the numbers as we go along. Hopefully this 18 million is the number. So what we typically do is we use a database in our office based on our years of working in the school community in this area to help guide us as to where costs are now and that's one aspect of it. The other aspect of it is real-time cost estimates that we often get from contractors in the area that are bidding things. So we are constantly bidding projects throughout the area and use those as references for where we think the project is going to cost here. Of course, we have to add certain other costs to that. There's a design contingency that is added into the numbers so that as you're going through the project after, beyond both, if some adjustments have to be made in order to meet the full potential of a project that you guys are looking for, that there's a couple extra dollars for it. There's construction contingency that's also included in that number, which usually ranges somewhere between five and seven percent. We have that included in that number. And then you have, you have escalation in there. So what we try and do is we try and anticipate what things are actually going to cost when we build it. That could be in the year of, we talked about 2020 for some projects, 2021 for some others. So we try and anticipate what those costs are within that number. And then finally, there's the actual project costs or soft costs. That would be your architects' fees, engineers' fees, insurances, third-party inspections, things of that nature. Perhaps you have some hazardous materials that have to be debated. You have to bring in professionals in there to monitor those type of things. So we include that in those numbers also. And you add them all up at the end of the day and that's what you get.
Thank you very much.
And Kevin, can you add, especially for the storage facility, you also estimated a price per square footage. Could you elaborate a little bit on that? Is, do you take all those numbers, for example, and add them together and then come out price per square footage or is it all broken down separately, just so the rest of the board understands?
So we actually did a number of different ways. First, it was the, we looked at a couple of different areas and depending on the area, the landscape, it gave you a certain type of bill that guided us towards what kind of square footage numbers that we were using. And then the second thing is then the actual square footage of the building. We ranged those spaces from 4,000 square feet to 2,000 square feet. We went through a couple of different iterations that we found one that best suited the spatial needs and minimized the size as much as possible to decrease the costs. So yes, we, we put together certain square footage numbers for each one of those and I don't have them right now, but I can certainly get them for you if you'd like to see them. And that's how we made those considerations.
Oh, I just want to clarify. So that means like if we wanted to see the other ideas that you guys had looked at, that is available?
Yeah, we have, like the one on Ferris Street.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just a comment, thank you for that.
Well, I do have questions if you want to have the, the final thank you.
I'm going to wait.
All right.
Oh, would you?
No.
No.
Yeah, I think, I'm convinced that, that you've looked low and high and far and wide for options in terms of a location. I, I find it a very convincing argument that we need to do something on behalf of your staff, Gary, and our equipment. But I, you know, there were suggestions and I guess I would ask as you go back, you know, what's the flexible thinking?
Of course, we are, actually.
I know you've tried a lot of variations.
No, 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 we've tried. There were some comments here. I know, I saw Deb writing some things. I wrote some things, having some ideas. Going to go back to the group. I mean, know that we will, we have listened and we plan on, you know, if people keep sharing some ideas or comments, we're going to take it in and we are flexible if we can be flexible.
Yeah. So along those lines, you know, is there anything that you, there was a gentleman who came and offered to help, that copper beech is a beautiful tree and certainly to the degree that you can help us understand the concerns that, that would be helpful.
That's easy. That one's.
I was curious about that, by the way. I lived in New York City my entire life and I, well, no, just, I mean, I'm just thinking about like the concrete growing around those trees, the roots coming up and breaking through the concrete. Is the, is the, I mean, is.
No, I mean, the.
What's the damage that could be done?
The, the concern is, is if we dig up the basketball courts and interfere with those roots, it'll disturb them, it, it can shorten the life of the tree.
That's what I'm, it's a real thing, yeah.
Yes, it is a real thing.
Nutrients for the tree, right? So.
But I just, how did the other tree survive?
Root damage.
Mr. Shep's is an expert in this field, he could probably.
I want to talk to him.
That's how we lost the beach on the other side of the building about seven years ago.
I guess to the degree that, you know, maybe you can answer some of these now, but the noise factor, what can be done in terms of a, a building to, you know, reduce noise? I, I think there are neighbors in, in three of the four directions, so in terms of the way it's faced, I think, you know, you might want to take a second look and see about that. The, and then, you know, the concern around safety, I know you talked about looking at how to adjust the pedestrian path that comes from the north side. But I'm wondering in terms of the, the ideas around landscaping and screening, if there's also an opportunity for some, some fencing both around the building, the drive and the stop sign, et cetera, to, to increase the, the sense of safety for our students in that area. And then again, you know, I, I think you thought long and hard about the, the size of this building, but there was a suggestion about scale and whether that provides any opportunities in terms of finding a balance to some degree. So those would be my questions. But yes, to, to preview Dave's comments, I'm really impressed with, with your work, everyone. It's, it's a lot and I can't imagine the amount of time you've put into it so far. So thank you.
Well, now I got to add something, right? Because you can't steal my bank.
But you were, what, you were a literature major? Acting, a couple of other things.
Drama, yeah. But yes, I need to, I just, I want to thank the community also. I think it's important because there's been a, you know, I, I think, I think it's important for the community to understand that the seven, I think I can speak for the seven of us pretty reasonably on this one. We pay really close attention and to see the community come out and support the stuff that I've seen on Facebook, it's really important to do that. Like I just, I want to urge the community that like while Facebook is an amazing banner and an amazing place to sort of make announcements and do different things, getting in dialogue and there's, there's a lot of social science research to back this up, by the way, I'm not going to get into it, but you know, that's a launching point for a deeper conversation. So I really want to thank the folks that came out, the folks that left that aren't here for coming out and really expressing their opinions in a really productive manner. And I really want to, when you do that, when we do that together and we keep it factual, and I, I'm saying, I'm going to say that like four times right now, when you speak and when we speak, it's really important that we're committed to the facts, not what I read in the newspaper, not what I saw or heard from somebody somewhere, what are the facts? If you hear something from somebody somewhere and you're not sure, it sounds weird or whatever it is, reach out and ask. We will answer, we will respond all the time. And so, you know, seeing this rise up, especially the one issue everybody left, but I know some of you are still here, and speaking out for your neighborhood is extremely important to us. I think I speak for the seven of us.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, for coming from nearly the grave to do this presentation.
This may put me back in the grave, but.
He's got the flu, so stay away.
I just want to remind the, the board that by March 5th, we really need to finalize our scope, so I'm just going to be the taskmaster here and tell you that, okay?
So, and so in sharing those questions, I hope, I'm not sure what our next opportunity is to hear about because we have, I guess, Tuesday is a pretty short turnaround. We have to look at another.
Continue to ask the questions and we'll be continuing to talk, but we, we're going to need to make a final decision by.
All right. And I was a little too quick to wrap things up. There's certainly on our agenda additional community comment, hopefully in new areas.
I just, I'm trying to understand the learning space.
I'm sorry, Ms. Lenz, with all due respect, could we give other people a chance to test? You're, you're just standing. Looks like the floor is yours. It's yours. Thank you, Ms. Lenz.
I'm trying to understand the learning spaces with the library and what the goal is and what the vision is. Because I, I think I've been a little bit concerned with how the library's been thinning out and my kids have had to go down to the Irvington Library. Like is it, are books going to be, I, I know looking up there, there's no books. So what's our vision for the library?
I would say, I don't care if you can go to find that slide, but it's not the idea of doing away with, with books. There's been a lot of underutilized stacks in there for years, so things have been reorganized. I can say over recent years, there's also been a shift to increase in purchase of digital media and subscription services where digital media is available for our staff and students. What we're realistically looking at doing here is not minimizing the access to, to literature. It's looking at how we can re-envision the space to better serve kids' needs today, instructional needs today, but also creating a space that's going to be there as a resource 10, 15 years from now. So when we think of the, Brian's comments before related to the Dow's Lane Library and looking at old traditional library, well, this is a nice, big, beautiful space, but we want to re-envision how we could utilize it different to accommodate different types of activities and different types of learning. So when you look at the, the visual that Carol just put up, you can see the different opportunities. So if you picture when you walk in the main door of that library, coming to the CPR, on the left-hand side, we're actually picturing an area that, where there's going to be opportunities for collaboration, where students are going to be able to speak, students are going to be able to, where you, noise would be more permissible than that traditional library environment. So to accommodate that, we're actually looking at putting up potentially glass walls in that area so you can have that, that volume in there, but when you step out into the broader space of the library, you can have the silent study, research space that would occur. Step into the back of the library, there is a, a classroom space. If you can picture in that back corner, there's a smartboard in that, but actually creating it so that we can, there's instruction that happens in the library. So how can we accommodate multiple activities in the space at once to really, to maximize what's available to us? And then when we look upstairs on the, the next slide, we're just looking at a variety of different types of spaces. We actually have instruction that occurs in, in the library that isn't a specific library instruction where a librarian is facilitating activity or a classroom teacher brings a class there and teaches or collaborates with a, a media library specialist. But we actually use space for ENL, for example, English is a New Language, actually small group instruction occurs in the upper portion of the library. So what we're looking at doing is actually identifying some spaces where we can, again, have small spaces where we can close it in, some smaller glassrooms where you can have collaborative space, you can have instruction that occur. And then around the perimeter of the balcony that you can have traditional, as we've illustrated here, study carols, desks for kids to be able to work. So it's re-envisioning what it could look like to serve needs today, but also giving us opportunity for all different types of use down the road.
Which I appreciate and I think it's a great idea to have the separate uses, especially, you know, with areas that kids can speak and can study. I know that my kids use that a lot. I'm just a little surprised with the shift in, in not having the books and has the board considered, do we want the kids to read more or are they reading as much as they did five years ago, seven years ago? And where's the importance of that and the actual book itself? So, and I'm just getting tired of taking my kids or them taking my car dance in the library.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the community? So there is an opportunity for, for those who, who would like to ask additional questions, there is a Q and A on Saturday from 9:30 to 11:30 a.m. here in the campus presentation room, joining the library in the middle school, high school campus. Our next meeting is on, next Tuesday, February 12th. I believe there may be some additional updates in terms of anything that you have at that point and certainly to the degree that we need an additional discussion. point and certainly to the degree that we need an additional discussion before the board votes on a proposal, we can reflect on that perhaps? Okay. So, I do want to call for an executive session, but I want to see if we would have quorum if I do that. So, one, two, three, four, five. So, could I get a motion for an executive session for the purposes of discussing employment history of particular persons?
So, moved.
Who's the, who's the first?
Maura.
And the second is Dave. All in favor? So, we'll take a five-minute break. I think you're coming.
Thank you very much, our architect, construction manager and.
That's why we're recording here.
Thank you very much. And Brian.